And recognize that we do not respond. We're not, by our rules, we are not allowed to respond because we have a bully pulpit. So, we get to talk until everyone dies of old age. You unfortunately just have the three minutes, but I think it's for the best ultimately. But it, so it's your time and you are not limited by subject. You can speak on any topics. Stuff that we're addressing today or not, your pleasure. And with that caveat, I will invite Jasper Lapinski up first. Thanks for the salute.
Who was with the wrong?
Oh, regardless.
So, my name is Jasper Lapinski. I live at Village Hill and I wanted to address what I personally addressed. Last week, there was a lot of snow at the bus stop at the Academy of Music. I think probably most of the people in this room don't take the bus a lot and were not bothered by it. I found it slightly irritating and then slightly more irritating as time went on. Eventually, I decided to do something about it. So, as some of you may know, I started the process myself. I put in two and a half hours of my own labor, mostly to prove a point, but it did make a difference in the intervening week. After I used that to raise the issue, the Department of Public Works did something about it. So, quite quickly, I would add. And I was impressed and I think that the fact that they are responsive and the fact that the mayor's office was involved speaks to the ability of citizens in Northampton to make a difference with this government and with this council. And I think, and I'm speaking to the cameras a little bit at this point, this is not something that every community has and we should take advantage of it collectively. I have done so. I think probably any citizen could do something like that if they wanted to. I'm going to move from that. You're going to rate me in the B range tonight, Ryan. That's okay. But I want to move from that to say that I have not read the materials pertaining to the several ordinances regarding bicycles and sidewalks that are on tonight. In case I'm not able to stay to the end of the meeting, I just want to urge you to have a thoughtful conversation that includes the sort of forward thinking that I've been encouraging over the last couple of years and not just simply how do we address right here, right now. Specifically, continuing to require homeowners to shovel the sidewalks they abut is not effective because a lot of homeowners don't actually live in the houses that they own in Northampton. And so, they have no reason to care. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Sarah Bankin?
Hello. My name is Sarah Banker. I live at 136 Hinckley Street. This is my first public comment at City Council. And I came out because, actually about the snow removal ordinance, I just wanted to express my support for the amendment that you're going to be looking at tonight. And the reason is because I understand that shoveling sidewalks as a homeowner can be really burdensome. However, I think the trade-off is well worth it. And the reason for that is because I feel really strongly that everyone in our community should be able to get around by foot if they need to. And a lot of people, that's their only form of transportation. And so, if you have a whole stretch of sidewalk and most people are shoveling and then there's one person who doesn't, it effectively makes the entire sidewalk, you know, impassable. And so, the, having the ability through, as I understand, DPW or the Police Department to issue a citation, I think begins to kind of put us on par with what's been going on with the, the snow removal policy and, or the snow emergency policy vis-à-vis cars in terms of, you know, if it's a snow emergency, you have to put your car in the driveway. And I remember a couple of years ago when that began to be enforced and my housemate's car got towed and we learned very quickly that that's what was going on. And it was frustrating at first, but then we got used to it. And in the end, I thought it, it really makes sense because our cars don't get, you know, covered in snow now. So, I think the same can be true for this ordinance. I think, you know, there might be some pushback at first, but I think in the long term, it's something our community really needs to work towards in terms of being fully accessible for everyone, particularly schoolchildren and elders. And in the last minute, I'll just cite, BBPC, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, conducted a focus group with elders in Northampton and surrounding towns about a year ago. And snow just came up overwhelmingly as barriers to activity for elders in our community. And just to cite a couple of things, snow clearing on sidewalks is inconsistent. The enforcement of snow clearing where it is required is a huge, is a huge issue. And so, those were like two of the top concerns that elders in our community brought up. So, I just wanted to make sure that I represented that viewpoint as well. There's been some good data collection efforts. And because I'm running out of time, I also want to say very quickly that I urge you to support the bike and ped amendments tonight too, because as a biker, that's why I live here, really. And I love more bike parking. We can't have more of it in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Bud, you're up.
Thank you first for your service. I mean, I would never want to come in here and sit through these endless amount of hours that you all do. And I appreciate the public service. So, thank you. I'm here to also speak on the, the new ordinance for snow on sidewalks. This came up.
I'm going to interrupt just a second, Bud, just so you, could you identify yourself and with your address for the record?
Of course. I'm sorry. My name is Bud Stockwell, 240 Audubon Road in Leeds, Massachusetts. I'm also the Chair, Chairman of the Downtown Business Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. And this issue about the sidewalks of, just as I think with Sarah spoke so eloquently about the need for safe passage and having things be safe, a lot of business owners in town feel exactly the same way. And, but when we looked at the old ordinance, we saw a lot of problems with it. And I think the ordinance that is being presented here tonight is great. It still doesn't talk about where the snow is supposed to go in downtown. It says full width of the sidewalk and there's really, if you can't put it on the street, where are you going to put it? So, but the, the changes that I do see, I wholeheartedly support. I love the change of being able to have parking officials, the parking enforcement officers being able to levy the fines, not their civil. I just really am going to state my support for it. The only thing that came up at the last Downtown Business Committee meeting was that eight o'clock seemed onerous and we feel like nine thirty would probably be a better time to have the, the fines begin, you know, where you would be not in compliance. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Em, you're up.
Hello again. My name is Emily Withenberry and I own One Amber Lane. I was here at the last City Council meeting and my partner and I just wanted to thank all of you for your support and make sure that we came out and actually said that in person. It was really encouraging to hear all of your feedback during and after the meeting. And we also got a lot of feedback from the community after the City Council meeting. There was a news story in the Gazette and a lot of people heard about it. People kind of stopped by the property or reached out to us. And it was really nice to hear from property owners in the area as well as local business owners and residents. So, I have a couple of letters here that I thought you guys might like to hear that I got as kind of formal support for the parklet. So, the first one is from Andy Adams, who owns 183 Main Street, which has Adams Jewelry and also houses Hay Market. And they're our neighbors. And he says, "The proposed parklet behind my building sounds like a great idea and can only enhance the downtown Northampton experience. Sincerely, Andy Adams." And his neighbor, the owner of Hay Market Cafe, Peter Simpson, is someone that we're working really closely with, my partner Fitzpatrick and I, to kind of find ways to enliven the Amber Lane stretch, which would include the development of this community parklet. And he says, "I would like to give support to the idea of a small parklet at the bottom of Amber Lane. I would encourage this project to move forward and in fact expand it to include other spaces on Main Street or anywhere else in the downtown area where people are motivated to do so. Any involvement by local residents to give back to the city in this way should be applauded. In any way that the Hay Market could be of assistance in this endeavor, we would be grateful to be included. When I was shown pictures of these projects in the San Francisco area, I was really intrigued. If somehow we could model this movement to bring more public spaces to Northampton, I think it could have a lasting positive impact on the future of our town. I hope this project at Amber Lane can be an inspiring first step." So, I felt like that was a really encouraging thing that, you know, we got as a formal letter from him. So, I just wanted to share that with you. And I know our little triangle is just, you know, 150 square feet. It's very small, but I think that we have a lot of really big ideas and I hope that it can be an encouraging first step for the community to develop more of these. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all we have signed up. Is anyone else interested in speaking at this time? I have an email? Okay. All right. This is, this is a comment, email comment that was probably, it was, the intent was to present it during public comment, I guess. This is from Tespo at Beehive Sewing. "The change from 8:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. swings too far towards business interests and ignores the spirit of the current ordinance," and this is relative to sidewalk, again, sidewalk clearing, "which is the safety of those who walk either by choice or by necessity on public sidewalks during inclement weather. I understand the challenges building owners must face to maintain their properties during the winter months, but sacrificing the safety and comfort of pedestrians seems like the wrong solution to those challenges. And our central business district sidewalks should not look inaccessible to those who live, work, or visit." Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Thank you. I'm going to ask the Secretary to call the rule, please.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Chair.
Here.
We have a quorum, in fact. Everybody's in their place. And my chair's falling apart. I'm sorry.
I thought you were whacking your son.
So, if I should just disappear at any point during the meeting, just resume, the chairs collapse under my significant weight, gravity. So, we have no public hearing scheduled for this, but I will announce a public hearing that, and this is by order of the City Council, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, April 2nd, 2014, at 7:05 here in the Council Chambers in accordance with the City Charter of Northampton, Massachusetts, Article 7, Finance and Fiscal Procedures, Section 7-5. This is the capital improvement program and this is a public hearing for that. The City Council will consider the capital improvement program for FY 2016 to FY 20 of 2020. Counselor Adams.
Do we know the approximate length of the agenda without that?
Counselor Murphy?
I don't mean the finance agenda. I mean the City Council agenda.
For that?
For that meeting.
For that meeting? That night, that'll be in finance that the, is?
First reading's for the time. There's quite a few ordinances.
Well, here's what I'm getting at. If it's a long agenda meeting, that might, agenda meeting, that might not, agenda, that might, that might not be the time to do it.
You, you would like to consider possibly one of the Tuesday Finance Committee meetings?
I mean, I mean possibly, but I just, I don't know if we can know at this point how long the City Council agenda would otherwise be. But sometimes things tend to pile up and to add something of that magnitude on top of it might make it an extremely long meeting.
Insofar as, let's see, we have, with the announcement of that public, actually clocks start ticking, but would the Finance Committee consider convening on one of your regular Tuesday schedules instead to have a separate meeting dedicated to the discussion?
I mean, that, that's perfectly fine. And I think there's some timing on some of these issues to get them. And the mayor might be able to chime in on this, but there's, when I talked to Susan, there's timing on some of these financial orders that we've got to get done.
Well, it's not, if, do you want me to address that issue?
Yeah, please, please.
The program itself is, obviously, there's a deadline set by the charter. We were going to have an issue, and this happened last year as well, where there are a few projects that are on the capital improvement program that we actually want to bring forward sooner because we have a bonding deadline of June and we, to, to roll some bands into a larger bond that we want to include these in. And so, it's, this is actually similar. Last year, when I presented the plan, you may recall that the new parking system for the garage was part of the plan, or part of the program, but we wanted to get that, that purchased and installed. We didn't want to wait till after July 1st. So, we actually brought forward an order almost parallel to the program. And it's actually our intent to do that for a few projects that are in this program so that we can get under that bonding window in May, hopefully, because the interest rates are so favorable right now. We want to make sure we get them included in the program. So, anyway, so anyway, I, we were going to introduce them on April 2nd, actually, to run sort of parallel with the program, but that, but if you were to hold it on a different date, that would be fine too. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
I'm hearing that it'd be okay if we do it later, but when is your next Tuesday Finance Committee meeting?
We have one at the, that's set up for the end of April now for the audit, city municipal audit. But we certainly could use the one at the end of this month or, you know, we, we can set that meeting.
So, if you did it at the end of this month, it would still be well within the 14 days, correct?
Yeah, notification.
Okay.
That would be the 24th?
24th.
Yes. Counselor Bart.
That's what I was going to say.
Yes.
March 24th.
Alternately, Finance could call special meeting. The hearing purposes on the 7th or anytime previous to that, as long as it's within the 14-day window. But it'd be good to make a date if we're going to announce to the folks when it's going to happen.
I'm, I'm fine with the 24th.
Well, 24th is fine because the, the audit was moved off till April, so the 24th is a free date.
You're the last Tuesday of the month?
Yes. Or the 3rd, which sometimes is the last and, 4th?
It's a Tuesday.
It's the 24th.
So, the 24th is a day. And because the audit was moved, that day's available.
We've, we've established the 24th is a day.
What would the time be? David, what's the time?
It has to be published in the newspaper, so if you, we'll wrestle Dan Crowley to the ground to make sure that that happens and then.
So, it would have to, the ad would have to go in like tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Meaning literally published tomorrow?
Uh, no.
Just has to be submitted.
I have five days, a five-day window, so.
Okay.
They, they also have deadlines too that I'm going to be.
Right. Okay.
They've been very, the Gazette's been very accommodating when we've come up on short notice. It doesn't meet their deadline necessarily when, when it comes to these civic announcements.
Counselor Bart.
So, it'll be at 5:00?
The meeting will be at 5:00. Well, all right. Let's, let's do this then as an official announcement then. Changing that previous hearing announcement, the new hearing date will be the 24th of this month, March, here in Council Chambers at 5:00, as the Finance Committee meeting will convene. And this will be for the purposes to discuss in a public hearing, would the public allow to contribute to that conversation, the, the CPI? So.
It would then come again to the full council?
Correct.
At all, on, on the Thursday, the April 2nd?
Would it, would it then again come out of Finance and to be presented to the?
It would be, we would have to pass a resolution, that's right.
So, so would still be, it would still be on our agenda on April 2nd, but, but it would be in addition to the public hearing that had already happened on the 24th? Okay, that's helpful.
Why? Okay. That fires out.
Oh, um.
Yes.
Just, so, and that's at 5:00?
At 5:00 here in Council Chambers.
Talk early in that day.
Ah, okay.
The U and D, but we can still.
Right. That's right. I forgot about that. That's right. We'll be presenting, Counselor Carney and I, but we'll make it in time for that. Now, we come up to the communications from the mayor now that he's, since he's at the podium already, meeting.
Thank you. I was actually just letting the Finance Director know that this is changing.
Oh, I think that's the reason.
Tough to be there, so. So, I have a couple of proclamations that I'd like to present this evening. The first one is actually timely because it's an event that's happening this Saturday. The proclamation is entitled, "The 10th Annual Vins Dog Show, March 7th, 2015. Whereas the Volunteers in Northampton Schools is a private nonprofit organization founded in 1981, whose mission is to provide volunteers in all of Northampton's public schools. Whereas the Vins Dog Show was designed 10 years ago as a family-friendly event to raise funds while focusing on fun. And whereas this community event raises about 15% of the $30,000 needed to coordinate the more than 100 volunteers in Northampton schools who support students and staff in our public schools. And whereas volunteer involvement in the schools supplements and enriches curriculum at the direction of the professional staff. Now therefore I, Mayor David J. Arkwitz, to hereby proclaim today as the day to march forth with your dog at the 10th Annual Vins Dog Show. Supporting efforts of volunteers in Northampton schools. In witness whereof, I have affixed my hand and paw and affixed the seal of the city. David J. Arkwitz, Mayor, City of Northampton." So, that's going to be happening this Saturday at the, at Hamp High in the gym. It's a great event if you've ever been there. Think a big plastic tarp and lots of dogs running around. And, and I'll be actually presenting this to them as well. The next proclamation.
What time?
I believe it starts at, I believe it starts at 10:00, but let, but I can verify that for you. I think I have to be there at 12:30, but I think it starts at 10:00. Somebody Google that quickly and verify that. So, so the, the next proclamation I have is entitled, "Brain Injury Awareness Month, March 2015. Whereas 2.4 million Americans sustain a traumatic brain injury each year, contributing to one-third of all injury-related deaths in the United States. And whereas brain injury is unpredictable in its consequences, affecting who we are, the way we think, act, and feel in a matter of seconds. And whereas many of the brain injuries that occur annually in this country can be prevented. And whereas there are many ways to reduce the chances of traumatic brain injury, including wearing a helmet when riding a bike, playing contact sports, skiing, snowboarding, and skateboarding, as well as making living areas safer for young children and senior citizens. And whereas improved treatment, better access to care, and responsible legislation are major considerations when addressing needs surrounding brain injury, but the most powerful tool is prevention. Now therefore I, Mayor David J. Arkwitz, to hereby proclaim the month of March 2015 to be Brain Injury Awareness Month in Northampton. Let us support organizations and programs that assist residents with traumatic brain injury along with their families, but also educate our community about the extent, causes, consequences, treatment, and prevention of traumatic brain injury. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and imprinted the city's seal this 5th day of March." And we have with us tonight a special guest, Mary Collier, who's here. She has been doing a lot of great work in our community as an advocate on this issue of brain injury awareness. And I wanted to invite her to the podium to formally present her with this proclamation. So, Mary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mary, yeah, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council members. I, I know that by now, the mayor's assistant has forwarded you an email. I'm here to ask for your help. I really want to talk with you guys. I'm not saying every single one of you, but I would like to talk with you individually somehow. I've been brain injured since 1979. To you, I look like any other girl on the street, but I'm not. I had a severe brain injury. They had to operate on my whole head. The blood clot on my head was that thick. Once you, once your brain is damaged, it doesn't come back. In the state of Massachussetts alone, right now, we have 3,022 people on a waiting list looking for homes, waiting for, you know, money. And that's really sad. That's the, that's the reality of it. I live here in this, in, I live in Florence and I live at Tobin Manor. I'm supported by an agency called ServiceNet. They are unbelievable. They have helped me. I've been working, I've been able to talk to the high schools, but I still don't think the students get it because guess what? I'm still seeing students not wearing helmets and that scares me to death because I don't want their families to go what through mine house. I've been very lucky to not only that, but talk to the police. They're really, really helpful. I have ideas, going to start working on those, but please, City Council members, I'm going to hopefully find a way to talk with you individually, one-on-one, so I can get your support. This is a very serious issue. United States alone, nationally, in one year, the cost is 60 billion. That's a pretty chunk of change. My life was changed from the minute I had my brain injury. I go to a conference every single year and show them, this is what I am, this is who I am. Please help me get the students from not only the high school, but the middle schools to understand. This isn't a joke. It's a very serious issue. Any way you're willing to talk with me and help support the ideas I have, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mary, I think it's Counsel Clark, indicated all our contact information is available at the website as well as the school committee members, whom you might want to also speak with.
Yeah, I have some ideas and I'm starting to work on them. I will go through the mayor and the Police Department to do this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks.
Your Honor, is that, is that it for you?
I believe that completes my own communication.
Okay. There are no presentations scheduled for tonight or license and petitions. I will accept, oh, there are one-minute announcements though, which I managed to keep forgetting, Counselor.
One-minute announcement. In our ward, in Ward 2, around Crescent Street, Franklin Street, and my own house at Massasoit Street in the backyard, I saw this bird, which is a great-horned owl, and it, which is amazing and it's awesome. And a lot of people have heard it in the neighborhood in the last couple of weeks. The announcement is, if you have cats or small dogs in that area, probably even maybe in the park or even some of your ward on Prospectory, you might want to consider keeping them in for a while. I saw this bird in the daylight. It's not usually seen in the daylight and it is enormous. I'm going to keep my own big 80-pound dog in for a little while too. So, anyway, it's great to see it, but be careful with your animals who are out in your backyard.
This is a great-horned owl big enough to carry an 80-pound dog?
Well, we're going to see. We're going to see who wins that one.
Okay. Counselor O'Donnell.
I can't top that one.
I gotta watch your wife's try.
Right, right. But I would like to, to see that owl at some point.
We can talk about the unicorn in Ward 3.
There are several unicorns in Ward 3, but I only have one minute. So, I'd just like to announce that on, on Monday, March 16th, there'll be a Ward 3 Community Meeting. It will actually be on the second floor of City Hall. And it has two components to it. At 6:00, we'll be discussing a lot of the traffic mitigation money that's been collected from various building projects in the Montview section of Ward 3 over the years. And our challenge now is to find ways to spend it wisely to improve pedestrian safety and walkability and also do traffic calming potentially in, in Ward 3. And at 7:00, the DPW will make. And at 7:00, the DPW will make a presentation about upcoming construction on the levees as required by the Army Corps of Engineers, and that could include removal of some vegetation, including the yew trees on the levees. So the public is invited to come and ask questions and hear about those plans, and of course, any other topic that comes to mind is fair game as well. So again, that's Monday, March 16th, starting at 6:00, second floor of City Hall.
Any other announcements? Uh, Council Murphy?
I want to follow up on the bird. Because if you don't see it, you might smell it, because my understanding is they have no sense of smell, and they feast on skunks. So most of the time, a great-horned owl smells of skunk because it doesn't matter to the birds, so if you don't see it, you might smell it, but they are fantastic creatures. And if you are lucky enough to see it and it's not eating your cat.
So you should keep your skunks inside, too.
Keep your skunk inside, too, yeah, absolutely. Uh, we don't have skunks in Ward 5.
Okay. Wow, the things you learn. Um, any other announcements? No unicorn wrangling events going on in 7? Okay, all right, all right. Dull winter, flying skunks.
Skunks.
Uh, so there are no other announcements, we now move to, I'll accept a motion relative to approval of the minutes from the last. Second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? What's that?
That's the best aye ever from the whole team.
I know, they got some energy now, they're going. If, once we get to quarter one, it's, those ayes start to die way, way down. Become mumbled. Next up, we also have, we have minutes from Social Services Veterans Cultural and Recreational Meeting of December 15, 2014. We have the Public Works Committee of the City Council Minutes, January 5, 2015. Public Safety Minutes of October 6, 2014, and December 1, 2014. And then Committees on Rules, Orders, Appointments, and Ordinance Meetings of January 12, 2015.
As a group.
Do you want to move them as a group?
Yes.
Any discussion relative to those minutes? Let's see if we can get another enthusiastic aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any abstentions? Okay, that passes. Uh, next up, we come up to appointments to committees, and we have, this will be the initial, the inaugural appointments for the Public Shade Tree Commission. We have Marilyn Castriata of 79 West Street, her term will begin March 2015, expire June 2016. Todd Ford of 78 Fern Street with the same term assignment. Jay Gerard of 158 Ryan Road, his term is recommended from March 2015 to expire June 2017. Lily Lombard of 39 Monroe Street, her term to begin March 2015 and to expire June 2017. And then Robert Postle of 44 Washington Avenue, again, the term starting in March 2015 but to expire June 2018. Andrew Smith of 10 Myrtle Street, the term starting 2015 in March, expiring June 2018. And Jennifer Werner of 16 Winthrop Street, also term starting at the same time, expiring June 2018. I'll accept a motion for referral.
Move to, second. Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments, and Ordinance.
Thank you. And seconded. Any discussion on those appointments? Referrals? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next up, we have appointment to the Northampton Housing Authorities, Jeffrey Jones of 76 Woods Road, his term to start March 2015, expiring June 2018, and this is a reappointment.
Move to refer.
Second. Okay, so there's a motion to refer, and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any abstentions? Next up, Board of Health, Donna Salum, 83 Palmero Terrace, the term starting March 2015, expiring June 2018, and this also is a reappointment. I'll accept the motion.
Move to refer.
Any discussion on the referral? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then opposed, abstentions, okay.
Skip over the number nine, or just out of?
The number nine?
Number nine.
Item 9?
Number nine of your address.
Oh, boy, we did, we did, we just blew right by Finance. Yeah, it's kind of important, sorry. Shit, it's okay. All right, out of order. The, we are going to go into recess for the Finance Committee, where Council Murphy will preside as Chair of the Finance Committee.
We didn't notice that eventually if it skipped.
Yeah.
It would've come up.
When we adjourned at 7:30, it would've, yeah.
Somebody would've.
It's already passed something through.
So, Pam, would you call our role, please?
Council Murphy.
I'm here.
Council Adams.
Here.
Council LaBarge.
Present.
Council Chair.
Here.
Great. First item is to approve the minutes of January 15, 2015. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and for orders for tonight, the first one, upon recommendation of the mayor, order that $23,000 be appropriated to conduct a comprehensive organizational and management assessment of the Department of Public Works to include operations, service levels, infrastructure management, organizational structure, and staffing. And to fund the study, appropriate $11,500 from the FY15 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, and $5,000 from the FY15 Water Enterprise Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, and $5,000 from the FY15 Sewer Enterprise Fund Balance Undesignated Fund Balance, and $1,500 from the FY15 Solid Waste Enterprise Undesignated Fund Balance. Do we have a motion on this? Going once, going twice, do we have a motion on this?
Second.
Okay, and the mayor is here to speak about it.
Good evening, councilors. I guess the order before you would appropriate the $23,000 and would allow me to commission a, a study, a comprehensive study of the DPW. And, you know, we've, we've experienced or made several sort of structural changes to the DPW in recent months, including, you know, the charter change, the administrative order. But more importantly, there've been, there've been a series of changes that have happened to the DPW over time, whether it's adding the landfill to the DPW, which previously had been handled by the Board of Public Works, the creation of new enterprise funds that we've added to, to their plate. We've also had other structural changes, there've been attrition that's occurred during multiple recessions. And so I really think this is an important opportunity, particularly since we've just made the structural changes, to really take a close look at the current organizational structure and make sure that it's the most efficient way for us to, for Public Works to be able to carry out their work. I should say that the Director supports this study, is very actually pleased and excited to do this, because he's expressed some of the same concerns over time about, you know, everything from the fact that it used to be Assistant Superintendent, it no longer exists. There used to be more staff, and that they're now increasingly taking on more and more responsibilities. There's now a lot more regulatory responsibilities. You heard earlier about the, the work that has to be done on the levy, and other work related to our, to our DEP and EPA permitting. And so I really think this is an excellent opportunity to do that. These funds would allow me to sign a contract with a firm that specializes in these kinds of studies, and it would probably be about a 12-week process, and it would involve not only looking at how the department is organized, staffed, how it carries out its functions, there would also be benchmarking involved to look at how we compare to similar-sized DPWs in other communities in terms of all these different metrics like staffing and funding and things like that. I think it's, I think it's important for us to really have a better understanding, to look at the organizational structure, and as we make budgetary investments in the DPW, to have this kind of assessment to be able to go forward. There was a study performed back in 2001 by Municipal Research, Municipal Resources Incorporated, MRI. That was during a, sort of a different period in the department's history. That resulted in some changes. In fact, some of the changes that I've most recently made were actually recommended by that report back in 2001. But that was really a focus studied, focused in many ways more on communication, on, on workplace climate, there were a lot of those kinds of issues. We really feel like we have a really well-functioning department, we think we have some really great employees. We just want to make sure that they have the structure in place and that they're working in the right structures to be able to, to carry out their mission efficiently. So I think this will be very beneficial, and I would ask for your support.
Questions for the mayor?
No.
Council Carney?
So, just to understand a little bit more, it's gonna be looking at staffing, operations, not capital, kinds of costs, because I'm wondering how this might inform the capital plan.
It's, it's going to look at, it's going to look at, it's really gonna be looking internally at the department, so it may in fact look at equipment, it may look at, it's gonna look at equipment inventories, it's gonna look at those kinds of things, whether they have the equipment and the fleet to be able to carry out the work they do. So certainly it could inform that going forward. It's gonna look at, you know, it's going to look at some of the larger assets, for example, like the, you know, like, like our water and stormwater and sewer, but, but it's not going to be a, a review of those, of that infrastructure. I think it's gonna look more at how they manage it, how they plan, how they, you know, those kinds of things. So more organizational and management level, as opposed to actually looking at the actual assets. I mean, we have very detailed studies that have been conducted of our stormwater assets, you know, we did the large, two-volume Camp Dresser-McGee study of our stormwater and flood control infrastructure, which actually led to the, to the creation eventually of the, of the enterprise fund that was created to start to whittle away at those projects. We've done similar studies of our, of our water and sewer infrastructure. So I think those things are, I mean, and those will probably be the kinds of things they're gonna be looking to see have they been done, for example.
I guess I'm just concerned about the timing, because if we are looking, we're now considering the capital improvement plan, and this might actually give us more information about equipment that needs to be purchased and things of that nature.
Yeah.
You know, how is it gonna kind of, will it dovetail timing-wise?
Well, the capital improvement program is a, is a, you know, is an ever-changing blueprint, and you're gonna approve it, but it's actually, it's not gonna commit any spending at this point. That would happen during the budget process. So, in terms of timing, it, it, the timing might not work out, that there'd be recommendations. I'd be very surprised if they got down to the level of recommending, you know, capital investments at this, at this type of, of an assessment, but there'd still be plenty of time to include it in the ongoing capital program if there were major changes. I certainly wouldn't recommend putting the capital program on hold. I mean, we know, we know our, you know, 1971, you know, plow needs to be replaced, and we know, and so there's those kinds of assets. We know we're going to need to, you know, we're gonna wanna pave this, this, this spring and summer as aggressively as we did last summer, so we want to make those. So I think some of those investments are, you know, aren't really gonna change, but there may be recommendations long-term that we'd be looking at, so.
Uh, Council Adams?
Was it in the FY 2015 budget?
No, it was not, no, it was not. That's why this is a, yeah, this is actually something that I'm bringing forward here mid-budget year, which is why I'm asking for the transfer, yeah, to pay for it. It's not something we budgeted for. It's really something, and you know, in many ways, the experience that we had with the IT assessment was very beneficial, and it's our, and you know, we've already been, begun to implement some of those recommendations. And I think it was very useful to really have someone from the outside come in, meet with staff, meet with managers, meet with, you know, all the various folks, and really give a, give an overview in an outsider's perspective of what was happening. And I think the same thing would be very useful for the DPW.
Why is it important to do now as opposed to building it in the 2016 budget?
Well, I really feel, you know, we're, I'm at a, and you know, this might be something that I can have Director Huntley talk to you about. They've made some requests to me, particularly as we look at the budget, as we look at things like the new enterprise fund, as we look at all these different responsibilities I've described, for additional staffing. They have made requests for significant additional staffing, as well as in the level of, at the management level. And I really feel like, I, I don't feel confident in moving forward with those kinds of recommendations without sort of taking a step back to really make sure, I mean, if you, I mean, the org chart, I should've brought it, for the current org chart for the DPW is about this wide. And it's, and you know, it's sort of been, it's evolved over time as we've added things and moved things, but I'm, I'm not convinced that this is necessarily the right configuration. And, and, and so I think it's worth getting an outside set of eyes to look at before we start making hires or building out the currents, the current structure. I really, I'd really like to take a look at the, at the other structure, at, at other potential structures.
Council, sorry, you're not done.
Who would you expect to do the assessment?
Who would do it? Well, we've, we've requested, I've requested quotes from three, from three separate companies that specialize in this, and, and we would move forward with a, if, if the money was secured, we would move forward with the best qualified to do that. So that would be the, and there are, you know, we've, we've, there are different companies out there that specialize in this. We would, we've checked, you know, references of other cities and towns that have gone through similar, similar, similar assessments, and so we would try to move forward with somebody quickly and get them on board to get this project started. And I know the DPW is, is anxious and excited to do it as well.
Can other departments expect to have this sort of comprehensive review?
No, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a good thing to do over time. I think what I'm, I just, you know, the IT one was, was one that's been, you know, was a priority for me when I came into office, the, looking at our, looking at our IT infrastructure. So that one's sort of evolved over time. We have done, we have done these kinds of assessments when we, before we built the police station, we brought in a outside consultant who did a whole assessment of the police force and did sort of a 50-year kind of projection of what our staffing should look like, what our, what our force would look like, so that when we built a building, we'd be building it not just for the current force, but we'd be building it for the future. We have done similar assessments for the fire department in the past. So it's not something that I'm planning to do on a department-by-department basis, but I feel like the DPW, which is, which is a, you know, considerable part of our city budget, and it's one of our larger departments, I think it's, I think it's a valuable one for that particular department. And I would also add, we have done, we have done assessments of our financial departments, but we've done it through a technical assistance program with the DOR. So we've, we've done, we've done those kinds of assessments where we've had DOR come in and do, and those are free, so that's a, that's a great thing. So we are always looking at ways to do assessments of departments, but for this type of a sized department and this type of a study, I think it's important to bring someone in to do it from the outside.
You good?
Yes.
Council LaBarge?
Councilor Adams answered a couple of my questions, but mayor, I think you're going in the right direction. I support this 100%, just like we brought in a consultant for MIS, and it took some time, but you saw what needed to be done there. And I know, just with residents alone and hearing from people in the city of Northampton, that, and I did get calls because I thought on the website, and I thought it was the right direction to go into.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. I remember when you did the parking study, and you asked for bids and the city received two, and I don't know if that's, that's good or bad, but I'm wondering, the amount of money you were planning here, $23,000, seems, is just a specific amount of money, you know, it's, I don't know how you arrived at 23, but... it's, I don't know how you arrived at 23, but I guess my, my real question is, is that comparable to say what we spent in 2001 on the MRI study?
That's a good question.
Would you expect it to solicit, or to bring in a good number of bids to choose from?
Actually, I have, I already have three quotes.
Oh, you already have?
And so that $23,000 represents, yeah, so I've gone out already, and because of this amount, we don't have to do an RFP. When you're doing a study that's over 35, when you're doing any kind of bidding over 35,000, you have to do a, you do have to do a formal RFP. But for something like this, and I, I talked to other communities who've done these studies, and, and so I got sort of a range of what it cost, and most of them were coming in at the 20, you know, under 35,000. So in that case, under 30B, all we had to do was, I sent out proposals to three, the sort of the three top firms that do this, including actually the Collins Center at UMass, who've done other assessments for us as well. And so, and I received back information from all three of them, as well, actually MRI was one of them that I reached out to as well, who had done the previous DPW study.
That's helpful.
Yeah. So that's what, so the dollar number is, is sort of based on what we've gotten back from, from quotes, but I can't actually, I can't finalize any kind of a, a deal unless I have the money, unless I have authorization, appropriation to do it, so.
Do you, do you know who you would, would that kind of expect you to say, or is there still more process to go through?
No, actually, I think the firm that I'm very much interested is a firm called Matrix Consulting.
Okay.
And they have, are very experienced in this, and they have done other studies of other departments, other cities around the Commonwealth, Watertown, Gloucester. They actually were in a, sort of a different role, were hired by the Control Board in Springfield to do, to do assessments of several city departments there, and they have a lot of experience with public works departments. I've, I've read some of their other studies that they've done, and so they're, they come high, and I've talked to some mayors who they've worked with. So they're sort of my leading candidate at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Good to know.
Yeah.
Counselor Kirk.
Maybe more comment than questions. I would say that, and maybe you could concur, that this is, dovetails nicely with the new role of the mayor's office, where in the major change that we've had, where we no longer have a board of public works that ordinarily, in the past, might have, might have really overseen something of this nature. So it seems as though, maybe you could correct me if I'm wrong, but it would help your office kind of take over the management of the, you know, the newly structured, not the department being newly structured, but the oversight of that being more in the mayor's office with the advisors, really. And so were you thinking, having those thoughts in mind?
Yeah, I think definitely, as I alluded to, the, the recent structural changes seemed like a good sort of opportunity to, to sort of a reflection point now that we've made these structural changes, and, and coupled with the, you know, all the new responsibilities that the department has taken on, and, and the discussions I've been having with them about looking at the structure and figuring out if it's the best, if it's currently, you know, if it still makes sense. You know, you may have heard recently, I mean, it's kind of funny, actually, you know, Westfield is, you know, going through a major, major reorganization, and they're basically, you know, consolidating a lot of what used to be separate departments into one public works department. But then within that, there's also some consolidations that are happening, you know, water and sewer becoming one, as opposed to two separate, you know, two separate entities with two separate staffs and silos and things like that. So there's, it's those kinds of things, as we're trying to do more with less, which we've had to do over the last many years, particularly in the public works department. You know, if we can find efficiencies the way we've organized the department, and the span of control, the span of management, those kinds of things, that's going to make it, their jobs easier, and it's going to make their service delivery much better as well.
Really, this department is unique in the sense that we've just had this major change.
Totally, yeah. And that's definitely not lost to me, and the timing is definitely, that's, you're correct, the timing is, is, it's not coincidence that I'm bringing this forward now. And, and I do think it's an important, it is a good opportunity now to, to look at the structure, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Klein.
I'm assuming that this is just going to be an internal process, there won't be kind of a public component of public input?
Yeah, it's, it's an assessment, it's an internal assessment. There will be a component in terms of talking to employees and trying to get feedback from them as well, but you know, one, some part of it will be looking at documents, looking at policies, look, you know, sort of the mundane stuff of just looking at what's there now, what, and, and looking at the current structure, looking at the budget. I actually sent the budget to all of the folks, so they have a sense of the size and scale and the workforce. And then it will be, you know, my, 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 I suspect the way these typically work is we'll put together a working group of folks within the department who'll sort of be a liaison to the, to the consultant, to help them, provide them with the information that they need as they move through the process. So, yeah, it's not really, there won't really be a public component to it, yeah.
Other questions for the mayor on this financial order? I think it'll be helpful to us as well, because we have a new role to play too.
Most definitely.
In the, in the rate settings and so forth, so I think the study would be good for this body as well to understand what's going on there.
Most definitely, and again, this will be a public.
Have our, a new hat to wear as far as public works.
And my, my hope would be, my hope would be that at the end of the process, we'd be able to have a presentation that could be made, you know, for the, for the public and for the council, so that they'd have an opportunity to hear, you know, what the recommendations are. Because obviously, some of them could involve, could involve, you know, the need to provide additional resources or make structural changes or things like that that would need, you know, council support.
So if there are no other questions, all in favor in finance of a positive recommendation for this work, you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next order is upon the recommendation of the mayor, whereas the Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School Board of Trustees has declared that Building H is available and is no longer needed for school purposes, and whereas Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 3 requires that the city council declare the space surplus, now therefore be ordered that Building H on the campus of Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School is declared surplus. The Board of Trustees and the mayor are authorized to rent the building to Greenfield Community College for a nursing program for an initial period not to exceed four years upon such terms as are approved by the Board of Trustees at Smith Vocational. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
Excellent. The mayor wish to speak to this?
Well, as you know, the Board of Trustees of Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School voted, I think, two months ago to exercise their option under a memorandum of agreement and lease with the rec department, now Parks and Rec Department, to, to not have the Parks and Rec Department located in the Building H on the campus any longer. And that's actually sort of, you drive through the campus and behind the athletic fields, and it's located next to what was the tennis court, which is now the solar field. And so, and they have been, and that was done for the express purpose of a new partnership with Greenfield Community College to move a licensed practical nurse, LPN, training program into that space. And so that is moving forward, and as a condition of that, like we do with any city property that's being put out to lease, there is a requirement under Mass General Law that the city council approve the surplusing of the space to school needs. And so that's why I'm bringing this forward for your vote, and I, and I'm obviously sponsoring it, and, and so I'll answer any questions.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes. How much is the lease?
At this point, the lease is still in negotiation, and so we, they're still working out the terms with, with GCC and also with, you know, the other state agency that oversees real estate for, for the college. And so that's being negotiated, and the trustees, as the, as the, you know, as the order says, will ultimately have to vote to approve that, and then I'll have to approve it. I'll have to ultimately approve the contract as mayor. So that's, that's where we are at this point. They do have a, I think they have a number now that they're using, which is, I don't know, I think it's about $1,500 a month, or something like that, but we're in discussions about that.
I'm very happy about Greenfield Community College, working it out with Smith Vocational on the licensed practical nursing program. And I know, mayor, I have stressed about this, I think it's excellent, so many people have asked for that program to come back, but I also have another concern, and that is, because we have a recreation department now who has to leave Smith Vocational, where are they going to go?
Well.
We haven't heard anything on this.
Yeah, well, we, we've been, we've been doing our due diligence over the last several, over the last couple of months since the vote became official, and we've been both surveying city property as well as looking at other leasing potential, and we've also in fact been looking at, at the potential for temporary relocation until we can find a longer term. We've even been looking at things like modular office space as a possibility. My hope is that we'll have that plan finalized, and to be able to announce, hopefully in the next couple of, well, weeks and months, because we obviously, according to the vote that was taken, we have to have them out of there by June. So we've been central, been working with central services, the school department, to, to identify that, and we'll be coming forward with a plan, and, and we may need some funding to help support the move initially to make that happen. Obviously, I'm, I have mixed feelings about it, and, you know, I have mixed feelings about it, I certainly understand the synergy between Smith Voc and GCC, I certainly understand the past history, but obviously, so, you know, I have, wear my trustee hat, but then I also wear my mayor hat, who's now trying to find a, a new space for nine employees in a very busy department during one of their busiest times of the year, which is spring, when they're planning, you know, Little Leagues and all the other activities. So it's going to be a, a challenge, but I've been working closely with Ms. Mogio and Mr. Pomerantz, and we hope to, we hope to come up with a plan that will, you know, meet that deadline for June.
Okay, because that's where my concern was, knowing that the recreation department had to move out of there, but we're bringing in a nursing program, which I think is great.
Yeah.
But where do we put our recreation department?
That's true, and, but at this point, we don't, you know, we don't really have a choice in the matter, we, you know, we've, they've taken the vote, we have to vacate. The LPN program is temporarily located in Greenfield. They were actually at the VA Medical Center, they had to leave there January 1st, they're in temporary quarters in Greenfield. The hope is that June, rec will move out, there'll be some work done to the, to the building to bring it up to what they need for classrooms, and they hope to start in September with, you know, having the program be operational there. So, so we'll, we are going to try to make it as seamless as possible, with the least amount of disruption as possible, to the Parks and Rec Department staff, and I'll keep you updated as soon as we have something more concrete.
Counselor Adams.
So the law requires that the council declares it surplus, even though it's school, school property?
That's correct, because it's ultimately city property. And so, you know, another example of this is when we, when, when the school department, through Lead School, leased some, two, three classrooms to Clark School for hearing at Lead School, that required a surplus vote by both the school committee, and then there actually, there was a surplus vote by the, by the city council, because ultimately, it's, it's city property after it's school property. So this is, you know, just like we've had to do with the James House in order to sign a lease, just like we had to do with dumpster parking spaces recently, to try to renew leases for those. So it's less about approving the lease, it's more about the, the, the land or the actual facility has to be declared surplus to either school use, in this case, or city use, when it's a city building.
Counselor.
So the money from rent will go into a fund that is somehow segregated, and if it's?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it will, it will go into a revolving fund, similar to what we have with James House, similar to what we have with, you know, Viker School, with other, other buildings that we lease out, and, and the lease will spell out responsibilities for both parties. You know, we're, we've been working most recently with them on insurance and liability responsibilities, and so those are the kinds of things that we're trying to iron out. And Joe Cook, our chief procurement officer, is writing, you know, lead on this and is, is reviewing all the documents, because I ultimately will have to approve them once the trustees approve them, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Council President.
Given that we have the authority over all city property insofar as the authority and surplus, this actually seems late in the game of the negotiations, at least from the trustees, as far as our participation, and then it would have, I think we would have benefited from, it's similar, actually, with the Clark School. We had, with the Clark School, we actually had a lot of preliminary discussions brought forward by the school department and, and in turn by the Leeds principal and the superintendent. We're all talking about, in advance of us considering a surplusing. Insofar as, I don't disagree with this, but insofar as the, the line of authority, and I think we often lose sight that, that our authority over property at Smith Vocational seems to, we seem to forget that we actually, it is part of, part of our watch, and I suspect the trustees and maybe the superintendent might also kind of forget about that on occasion. And I think, I, I mean, in, in this instance, I don't particularly have any objection to it, other than, as I said, the timing issue. It seems to me that if we can extend the request to the trustees and the superintendent that, should something like this percolate again sooner, again, that we be apprised of it sooner than at this point, at this juncture where it's basically, it's untenable to reject it just on the face of it because of the process, but at the same time, it seems a little late in the game at the point where we're being consulted.
Well, for what it's worth, some, some members on the Board of Trustees were feeling like this was brought forward without a lot of advanced notice either, including this trustee. So, so it's been a, it's been a, the process has been less than desirable from my perspective, and I've stated that on the record as a board of, as a member of the Board of Trustees, and obviously, members of the, members of the Parks and Rec Commission came and spoke to very similarly to that perspective as well, just in terms of the way this plan was developed and how, how folks found out about it. And so, but at this point, that's sort of, in the past, and frankly, you know, this vote has no, would have no bearing on the, on the Board of Trustees' vote relative to the MOA that they had with the Parks and Rec. They could have still done it and, and moved another school facility in there, some other school operation in there, and we wouldn't be having this conversation. It's just because they're not using it for a city or school use that they need the surplus vote.
Right, essentially, I mean.
Actually, I was the one who insisted that this vote needed to happen, and it was not without some back and forth and discussion legally that, that to remind them that this actually did have to happen.
Well, I, yeah, that's, that's actually more my concern, is reminding that, that the order of view, of review should not be given short shrift here, and I think that that, I, you know, the superintendent in Snug doesn't necessarily know how this breaks out, but the fact is that, that it's, as we try to make these lines clearer and brighter relative to chain of authority and responsibility, I think it'd be appropriate for, in the future, for the, these kind processes, particularly when it's, obviously when it's relative to the surplusing. Because, you know, when we've surplus other properties, we've had an opportunity to have public hearings, and we have people discuss their feelings regarding that, and when we surplus for sale, for sure.
Yeah.
In this case, it's a lease, and it's required by Mass General Law, but the fact is, I, I, that's all I'm expressing my concern about, and it's just so that, in, in the future.
And I hear it loud and clear, and that's actually, you know, one of the, the, we're in the middle of, hopefully coming close to the end of a, speaking of studies, we, we've been undergoing a, a nine-month study with the Donahue Institute at the University of Massachusetts that was. Massachusetts, that was actually commissioned at the, at my request and the request of the trustees, to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, who actually funded the study, to look at the governance and governance structure and, and financial structure of Smith Vocational. It's been a longstanding topic, it's a, it's a somewhat anomalous structure. We're the only city in the Commonwealth that has two school districts, and then we have this other added complexity of its, you know, the will and all of the implications of that. So it's a very unique situation, obviously, great school, wonderful tradition, agricultural education, only one of four in the state that's providing that common of education. So we're hopeful that that study is going to give us a way to look at possible changes in the future to that organizational structure. So, so anyway, it's timely.
Counselor Adams.
When is the lease to commence?
Again, it would be, I believe they, I think their school session starts in September, but it's actually gonna start sooner than that, because they need some time to move in and get all set up and things like that, so probably July, something along those lines.
So just two points. I don't, I don't think this is a little late in the game, this is the beginning of March, and it's not gonna start till July, but, but also, I have to point out, this is on the recommendation of the mayor, so I think it's a misguided criticism to fault the Smith-Vogue trustees. They don't bring this, they didn't bring this forward. Thank you. If there's any, if there's any criticism, it'd be hard to point out, it'd be hard to criticize the trustees, and they didn't bring it forward.
Counselor Dwight.
Well, to that point, yeah, whoever's responsible for it should bear the responsibility, but the fact that the trustees actually are responsible for bringing it forward to us, and if you're saying they haven't brought it for us, to us yet, then I would say that's very late in the game, it's even later still. I, I, my principal concern is that normally, what we have done in the past for surplusing discussions, that there was an opportunity for the public to have a public meetings, discussion, and participation, our participation so far was notification. We were notified, the mayor notified us in, in his, in, in his period where he's allowed to speak to us, and I, beyond that, there's been no other formal, other than this, formal address to us. So if, if that's on the mayor, then it's on the mayor, but if it's also, but I do believe the trustees and the, and by extension, the superintendent bears some responsibility as well.
And I'm, and I'm a trustee, so I'm, I, you know...
You're covered in the trustee criticism, yeah.
So you can criticize me in either capacity, but, but again, this is more of a, I don't wanna downplay its importance, but, you know, in a situation where the school department, or in this case, Smith, are leasing something, it's, it's a little bit different than leasing a city property, or leasing, you know, so it's, because then the council and the mayor would have a little bit more direct role. In this case, the school depart, you know, the school committee is the one signing the lease and executing the lease, not the mayor. So the council's not authorizing the mayor to do it. So it's, it's a little bit different, but I, but your point is well-taken, and, I mean, I did notify the council as soon as I was notified that we had been given notice, and that triggered this process, and any time they would be leasing to any non, any time the building would be used for non-school use, a surplus vote would be required. There was some confusion relative to that, and some disbelief about that being a requirement that we needed to work through, which is why it's, it did take a little bit longer. But we are still, I mean, the, the lease, you know, doesn't take effect until July, so we do still have...
Well, that's, that's one of the clear, bright lines I'd...
Exactly, yeah.
Other questions on this one? Of anyone? All right. Then in finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And speaking of Smith-Vogue, upon the recommendation of the mayor, order that $175,000 be appropriated for the following projects from the FY15 general fund, undesignated fund balance, to Smith-Vocational Agricultural School for the purposes of meeting FY14 and FY15 net school spending, and provide for the following extraordinary maintenance. Bleacher repair in the gym, which is Building B, $60,000. Classroom intruder lock sets, $50,000, and security cameras, $65,000. Do we have a motion, finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Great. Okay, please.
So this is, these are some items that, that Smith-Vocational have requested, actually, they requested it as part of the capital improvement program, so Counselor Murphy would've seen these as part of their submissions. We have a requirement that DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has imposed relative to meeting our obligation for what's called net school spending, both for FY14 and for FY15, and so our intent here is to appropriate this $175,000, which would meet that requirement, but appropriate it specifically for these extraordinary maintenance projects that they'd like to accomplish. And extraordinary maintenance projects of less than $150,000 qualify as a, as a net school spending, creditable appropriation charge. So that is the purpose of, of needing to do this.
Counselor Klein?
I wanted to ask about the cameras specifically. Is this installation of cameras, or is it maintenance of cameras that already exists?
I believe it's, it's, it's expanding their current cameras to include parts of the campus that are not currently, you know, they have a very big and sprawling campus. They hired a security director this last year, and, and have done sort of a full survey of the campus, and they believe that they need to expand that and to add some cameras in other parts of, of the campus.
So I have some real concerns about the concept of surveillance. I'm wondering, is there an audio component to the cameras, or it's simply...
Yeah, the, the way that the cameras work, I don't believe there's audio, the, the only audio would be at the entrances to the door, where you'd have a push button to buzz into the offices, which we have at all of our schools. And generally, these are cameras that are at entrances, at, at the various entrances and exits, so that we have a record of who's coming and going from the building. So, so that's the, that's the plan. Actually, I can, you can, I can certainly provide you, it's actually part of your capital improvement program, it's, it's, it's one of the, it's one of the sheets that's in the program, but, but I can direct you to that, that actually describes the, the project itself. Very similar to what we've done at the high school, and at all of our other elementary schools, to unfortunately, in the age of Columbine and Newtown, where we've had to beef up, you know, security, and make sure that entrances, that we know who's coming in and out of school. And then, obviously, when we have incidents or situations, or lockdown situations, then we have a record of who, who, who may have come in and out of the school.
So you're absolutely certain that these are just for entrances and exits?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding, but we can certainly, I can certainly verify that with you.
'Cause I, I'm really concerned about just the implications of a school as a place where violence or theft is taking place. I think that, once you put cameras in there, there is this culture of surveillance, which I think is, is a concept that we have to be thinking really carefully about in terms of what we want in our schools, the culture and atmosphere in our schools. So I just had some concern about that.
Okay.
The other thing is, I think that there, there's a, a concept of reasonable expectation of privacy under the Fourth Amendment, the, of the US Constitution, and, and there are some legal issues around surveillance cameras in schools that I'm concerned about, so I wanna make sure that the placement of the cameras is really for the purpose of just checking who's coming in and out, it's not for other kinds of surveillance, and I'd really like to be reassured that there's no audio recording happening. And also, there needs to be explicit notification of recording happening, so that there are things put up, signs put up, so that staff and students are always aware that those cameras are operating. So I just wanna make sure that those kinds of things are in place.
Counselor Adams.
I can pass that on to the security folks at Smith-Vogue.
I had similar concern, too. When, when you stated that, that's got an expansive campus, are, are they surveying, like, some of just their lands, as opposed to, you know, the...
No, I'm talking about, you know, you know, Northampton High School, there's one primary building with a front entrance, and then there are some side, you know, rear entrances and emergency exits and things like that, but, you know, the Smith campus has the main building, it's got Building B, it's got the ag building, it's got the tech building, it's got the, the old campus, I mean, so there's like, it's, there's multiple buildings on a campus that all have entrances and exits, and people that need to come in and out of those buildings. And, you know, it's a fairly open campus, and this, and I think they wanna encourage that, but at the same time, you know, the downside of the open campus is that folks can come onto campus and could theoretically enter a shop, or enter one of the, one of the outbuildings that's away from the administration buildings, and so they wanna have the same kinds of, same kinds of security measures in place there.
Would you be willing to report on some of those questions?
Sure, yeah, I can certainly, I can certainly get answers for you on that. And I know, and I'll try to find the specific reference to that CIP sheet that would be in your capital improvement program book, because every project that's in your book, it may not be in there.
It is.
It is, okay. If it's a project that we aren't recommending funding for, it might not be in there, but I'll, I'll, I can get you that sheet, it was part of the CIP's review process, so I can get that distributed to you, yeah.
Other questions? All right. Then in finance, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any business that anyone has that we did not reasonably check out? So two last comments before we adjourn. A very handsome photo on the internet today of our mayor, thirty years ago, was an Eagle Scout. Very nice picture, and I've had an overwhelming need to call you Counselor Collins tonight. It's a very handsome bowtie you have on over there.
Thank you.
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Um, we convene back in regular session, and as is our want, we'll go right back to the top of the financial orders for the new financial orders, and the first one up, of course, the, the order to appropriate funds for organizational and management assessment of the TPW, and this will be a first reading, I'll accept a motion.
Second it.
Any further discussion on this item? Roll call, Pam.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor LeBard?
Yes.
Counselor LeBard?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Yes.
The next up is the financial order for Smith-Vocational Agricultural High School building surplus for the rent, Building H. There's a motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBard?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
That passes unanimously in first reading, as did the last one, I should note, and for second reading at our next meeting. Next up is the financial order for free cash to SVAHS for extraordinary maintenance and net school spending. Motion. Second. Any discussion? Counselor Donald first, and then Counselor Klein next.
My question, I guess, is a procedural question prompted by Counselor Klein's comments. Since the council is sort of in control of the appropriation of this, at the risk of irritating people, I wanted to ask, I mean, do we ever amend orders to put conditions on them? This says, "Security cameras," could it say, "Security cameras for external use"? I'm not making that motion, it's just a question. Maybe I have irritated some.
No, you haven't, I just, I guess I would request, because it's not my, it's a, you know, it's a capital project that's been put forward by Smith-Vogue, I guess I'd ask you to first look at that, and, and then if there's an issue, or the council doesn't wanna approve it, they could withdraw it. I guess I'd wanna, I guess I'd, in fairness to them, because this is really a school department, Smith School Department project, I'd like to have them be able to address it. So, before you do that, 'cause again, we have athletic fields there, we have other, and we have, unlike most other schools, they do have some open-air classroom areas, specifically in the barns and in the forestry department, and in some of the other areas of the, of the campus as well. So I would be, I guess I'd want to have someone from their security come, come address this, rather than me agreeing to that type of a requirement.
I guess, oh, if I could just follow up, I mean, there may be complexities and nuances there, and you would wanna get the opinion of, of the school as well, but I guess my question still stands, is this something that we can do procedurally?
And Counselor Spector, do you wanna speak to that point? Counselor Klein was next.
No, I don't wanna speak to that.
Okay. Because I don't know.
Procedurally, I'm, we can amend orders, but, and I, and, and you can propose an amendment, and then we can discuss what that would be, but we, we can, we can amend orders. And Counselor Klein?
Well, I just wanted to say, I'm willing to support this tonight, but I do wanna look deeper into it and get some answers to those questions. It's partly kind of the spirit of trying to move us away from kind of surveilling our students and staff, but also, it really is a legal issue that the city could be held liable for, that we need to be informing people of the fact that they're being videotaped. I also am concerned, though, about the legality of the potential recording of voices, 'cause there have been, there is legal precedent of cases that schools have been sued for audio-recording students and staff, so, you know, there's just a legal component there that I think the city could be held liable for, that we need to be reassured around before we can take, you know, a vote.
Right. And I, I, there is the issue of informed consent as well, which we have to abide by by mass general law when we, when we conduct these meetings, and when we have public meetings. If, if that is mandated under law, it seems to me that, you know, that we express the caution, that we abide by the law and provide informed consent for notification of recording devices at entrance points, so people know that they're being recorded, and relative to the audio-recording, you're right, there is precedent law, as far as I understand. But to that extent, we don't need to amend for that, because that's already built into the law. But I don't know if you're saying something beyond what's already mandated for...
I'm just saying that we need to have those answers, I think, as a council, to make sure that those things are in place in order to make a decision, I think.
Is there, a thought towards an amendment, or, or would you prefer, I think the mayor certainly understands what we're talking about?
Yeah, just to, to that point, I mean, I agree that more consultation should happen before, I certainly would offer an amendment tonight.
The other thing is that secu, I mean, the term "security camera" is just a generic term for a project, that, you know, it's, so it's not, I'd rather have you see the full detail of the project.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I don't think that's meant to be an all-inclusive description of the project.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Counselor Spector?
I for, I would be comfortable with also voting on this tonight, and if we either got that information, or had somebody from Smith-Vogue who could be here at our next meeting, I mean, our choices either seem to be, either we vote for it, we table it, we take a first vote, I'm happy to take a first vote, as long as we know we'll have that information, and it may even be better to have somebody here, so we can speak with them, I'm not sure exactly who that would be.
Do they have a security staff person?
They do, yes. They have a security, a person that's their security.
Can we send an invitation via your office?
I can work on that, yeah, I can work on that.
Okay. Is that satisfactory to everyone? For the, for the first roll call?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBard?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes. Okay. That passes in first reading, the next reading will be at our next meeting. Next up is the financial order for the Amberlane Parklet, this is second reading, I'll accept a motion on this.
Make a motion.
Second. As you heard, the, the parklet seems to be fairly well-received by Butters and others. Any further discussion on this point? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBard?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Carrney?
Yes.
See, Counselor Murphy returned. Counselor Murphy, are you abstaining from these votes? We have, we just did two votes without you, so... Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, okay. Uh, next up, we have, uh, this is also in second reading, this is a financial order for, uh, Drowin Boggy Meadow Road, and I'm never confident about pronouncing that correctly.
Second.
Do you want to correct my pronunciation on that?
Druwin.
Druwin? Works for me.
Typically, typically that spelling.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I've never seen it typically, so I wouldn't know. Uh, so, the motion's made and seconded, any further discussion on this item beyond... Please, pronunciation. Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
That passes in second reading, and it has passed. Uh, next up, we have the financial order for the Stidler family donation, uh, this is also in second reading, I'll accept a motion.
Move to perp.
Second, in second, any further discussion?
Are you sure about the pronunciation?
That one I'm all okay with, I feel a little more confident about the Stidler pronunciation. And I should be able to pronounce French stuff, that's my family, but, uh, so, no further discussion. Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
This, uh, that, that passes in second reading and unanimously, so next up is the order for the Vachelli family donation.
Vachelli.
Vachelli. The Vachellis, yeah, okay, so the motion's made in second, any further discussion on pronunciation?
Shall we?
Second.
That's what it is. Yes.
Uh, on, on, which one, on the Stidler family? Counselor Laberge made the motion, I think Counselor O'Donnell seconded it.
Yep. How about Vachelli?
Vachelli, who's, who made the motion?
I did.
You have it, Counselor Laberge?
I'll second that motion.
And Counselor Spector seconded it. The Vachellis. All right, now will we clear all that up? Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
That passes in second reading. Next up is the financial order, this is in second reading, uh, for the transfer of land on Riverside Drive.
What?
I'll accept a motion. Accept a motion.
So moved.
Second it.
Uh, any discussion on Riverside Drive? On the discussion last time? Roll call, please.
Just want to make sure I'm on my way on. Why, I don't have my...
Agenda.
Number H.
Letter H.
Letter H.
Financial, number eighty.
Oh, yes, indeed.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
That passes in second reading. Um, we have, next up, the, um, this is the order for Scanlon Avenue, this is to, this also to correct the Scrivner's error on reference to the plan, and this is the first reading. Um, and I'll accept a motion to put it on the floor, and then we can discuss the Scrivner's error.
So moved.
Second.
There's a reference to put that in the scan order, so we need to correct that.
Um, so, as amended, but to, for the correction of the Scrivner's error, any further discussion on this item? Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
That passes in second reading, and it has passed. Uh, next up, we have the financial order for the Stidler family donation, this is also in second reading, I'll accept a motion.
Move to perp.
Second, in second, any further discussion?
Are you sure about the pronunciation?
That one I'm all okay with, I feel a little more confident about the Stidler pronunciation. And I should be able to pronounce French stuff, that's my family, but, uh, so, no further discussion. Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
That passes in second reading, and it has passed. Uh, next up, we have the financial order for the Scanlon Avenue, this is to, this also to correct the Scrivner's error on reference to the plan, and this is the first reading. Um, and I'll accept a motion to put it on the floor, and then we can discuss the Scrivner's error.
So moved.
Second.
There's a reference to put that in the scan order, so we need to correct that.
Um, so, as amended, but to, for the correction of the Scrivner's error, any further discussion on this item? Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherer?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Laberge?
Yes.
Merge the categories, so that's the biggest, the bulk of the categories are in that second line there. Then for manufacturing and industrial uses, point one space per thousand square feet of floor area. Schools, K through twelve, college classrooms, labs, or other teaching areas would be five spaces for, per classroom. That was amended through the process as well. That went, got bumped up from originally one space per classroom. The other modification is that business or trade and industrial schools used to be, or originally were lumped in that same classification. And there was a discussion at the planning board that business tra- and trade schools are slightly different. There's more, typically more commuter traffic from farther afield coming to those types of schools. So they separated, the planning board recommended separating that out and move that forward to council with that recommendation as two per classroom under that scenario versus five. And similarly, the way parking for cars are treated for any mixed use, you look at each individual use and determine how many bicycle parking spaces would be required for each use and then add those together. And then again, as with car parking, any use that's not listed would be up to the determination that, by the building commissioner to determine what's the best, the closest use to, to the table essentially.
I can wait.
It's, it's fine, go ahead.
How do we know this is proportionate to the need?
Um, well.
Is this based on a study? Is this just, I mean, where does this come from?
So we originally got technical assistance from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to look at other ordinances around the country and in Massachusetts in particular. So Pioneer Valley Planning Commission did an analysis and presented that to staff. We looked at it and sort of tested it based on projects that have come before the planning board. Most recently, the hotel and some other big commercial projects. And sort of thought about, and as well as thinking about classroom space and thinking about demands for parking, let's say for schools. So to a certain extent, the numbers originally were taken from what other communities have, have done, but tweaked to match sort of what seemed to be the demand here.
Let me ask you this, for example, you take one of the, one of the grammar schools. How many, how many spaces, how many classrooms does, you know, JFK or, or Leeds School has, have? Do we have any idea off the top of our heads? Because I mean, I mean, I don't know what that number is, is it twelve, is it twenty? And, and if we multiply that by five per classroom, does that really reflect the need? Or is that just to make us feel good about the number of, how we're accommodating bicycles? I mean, I mean, I mean, I understand the Pioneer Valley Plan- Planning Commission did a study, but is it based on the actual need in the city?
Well, I think if you look at five per classroom, typically they're about, you know, let's take elementary school. Twenty to twenty-five kids in a classroom. So you're talking about, you know, a quarter or a fifth of, of what would be, you know, of those kids might ride to school on a given day, if you just sort of break it down by classroom. I think, you know, we didn't go school by school and say, how many classrooms are in each school? So therefore, what does that mean in terms of number of parking spaces? But we, also if you go by the high school during, not the peak winter season, but there are bikes jammed up everywhere in front of the school, you know, beyond just the bike parking, you know, the bike slots. So we didn't count how many extra bikes are just locked to the fence at the church or other posts at the high school, but they're certainly well utilized.
Well, I guess, I guess my point is that there may certainly, you may certainly need, need more bicycle, you know, spaces for bikes to the high school or other places. But mandating by a very specific formula, not only schools, but all these other various, you know, entities in places have to follow this formula, it'd be tough for me to support it unless I knew it was based in, in some, in some, in some real need. I mean, it's one thing to, to say that they need more, but then there's another thing to just come up with this, with this strict formula when it's really not based on actual need.
Counsel Shara and then Counsel O'Donnell.
But am I correct that this is for new construction and a change of use? So you wouldn't, we, suddenly we wouldn't have to require the elementary schools to put in however many more?
Right.
Okay, so it's if we were to build a new one?
Right.
My question still holds though. If we're building a new facility, we don't know what their need is, why would we mandate this?
Counsel O'Donnell, then Counsel Laberge and then Counsel Specter.
Right after the table is the sentence, "The Office of Planning and Sustainability can authorize reduction in parking requirements when there are unique reasons why new bicycle parking is not required, including the availability of adequate public bicycle parking" and so forth, when there are better options. Does that sentence hold to every instance in, in the table? And does that provide the flexibility we would need to, to tailor each situation?
Right, that's sort of, that's the, that's the out essentially. Or you, you know, you have the ability to provide the rationale why, you know, a ten-unit apartment building doesn't need, you know, two spaces or one space. And, and, and then sort of we looked at the most, we have two, going back to the multifamily, not necessarily the commercial piece, but multifamily, we recently had two projects on Pleasant Street. One was a seventy-two unit multifamily structure and the other's fifty-five units. We were getting nine parking space, nine or ten parking spaces at one that the planning board asked to have parking shown. That seemed like a reasonable number at that level, but we just didn't have the number written down. So a lot of the effort to this point has been analyzing what's being proposed, whether it makes sense. And, you know, outside storage, certainly you've got, if you have one bike loop, that actually holds two bicycles. So it's not a whole lot of parking space allocated for bicycles. But, and, and so to a certain, to a certain extent, it is sort of made up, but based on what we've seen come through the permitting process and also having that outlet to say, have an applicant come forward and say, you know what, this is far too many for what we think the demand is and it's onerous. So we'd like to have this other number instead.
Counsel Laberge, Counsel Specter and then Counsel Klein.
What we're actually doing is putting a standard in place because there has to be a standard.
There is a standard to provide bicycle parking.
Right, but.
It's just not specific as to the type, the location and the amount.
Counsel Specter.
Yeah, and Counsel Adams, I understand your point, but I think in part what we're, you know, sometimes you do these things is what's going to happen in the future and to also change behavior. You know, if you provide a ton of parking somewhere downtown, people will drive cars. If there's tougher parking, sometimes people will walk. So there's, I mean, I think the high school is a good example where bikes are just, I mean, I remember even a few years ago, my kids were there. It's like, they weren't going to ride their bike there. It was like, there were just bikes everywhere and it just, so it's encouraging a certain kind of behavior. I don't think that's the main thrust of this, but I think it's certainly one. And I think the fact that there are outs to this and that if it's going to be onerous, someone can apply to, to change it, I think, is a good thing. So I think we need to look down the road because if I think if we look back, you know, even ten or fifteen years ago, the kind of bike use has gone up dramatically in this town from where it was. And I think in part, that's because we, we now have bike lanes, we now have bike trails, we now have become a more bike-friendly community. And you become more bike-friendly and say, a lot more people use bikes. We might not have predicted that fifteen, twenty years ago and say, oh, the need is there. So it's.
Now Counsel Klein, Counsel Specter did direct something to Counsel Adams and he's allowed an opportunity to rebut. Okay, Counsel Klein.
Well, I actually want to kind of echo what Counsel Specter's saying. I think that I appreciate your desire for kind of research and, and numbers kind of to support a policy decision. But I think that policies also, we created aspirationally, we're hoping to encourage particular behaviors and be forward-thinking and I think that that's what this does. If we have, you know, we're expanding the number of places for bikes, we are hoping in fact and encouraging through all kinds of policies across the spectrum to encourage bike riding. So I think it's a great idea.
Counsel Adams.
Here's my concern is that what this does is it, it mandates this formula, which we acknowledge is made up to a certain extent. And, and you can get a reduction in the, in the, of what's mandated if, if the planning board allows it. But similarly, if this didn't exist, they could, the planning board could also tell you, you need more bicycle, bicycle spaces. So, you know, it, it, it kind of switches the, a little bit. And, and, and when I read this, I just thought it was extremely burdensome. And I, I, you know, it's, it's, it's a laudable goal ultimately, and I think we're doing well with how, how bike-friendly Northampton is. But, but it is an obstacle for developers and, 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 and do we have any testimony from developers? Do, do we have any, you know, any support from developers? Do we, do we know what their concerns are, if they have any concerns about this at all? I mean, that's what I'm thinking about.
Well, I think right now we do have a standard where in order to get your site plan approved, you need to show that you're accommodating bicycle storage, but there's no number. So I think the, the unknown for developers is worse than not having a standard that might feel like it's a little more than the demand or, or the requirement or the demand would be for that. But they know what to expect, expect going in, whereas if there's something open-ended, the planning board could ask for a number that's really, sounds maybe outlandish to, I mean, maybe it wouldn't, but maybe it does. And then the applicant is stuck not knowing, if I don't agree to having this certain number that's not written down anywhere, am I just not going to get my permit approved? So I think that, I mean, we've, historically, we've seen that developers are much more comfortable knowing exactly what everything is in the book before they come forward, rather than having a series of obligations that are loosely defined, that may continually add up to an expense.
If a developer brought a product to the planning board and the planning board felt that there wasn't enough spaces for bikes, they could simply mandate that, right?
Right.
So, so I, there it is. I mean, I mean, I mean, I mean, then I, then I don't understand, then I don't understand the need for this.
Counsel Murphy.
Inadequate, if there are inadequate spaces for bicycles, the planning board can simply say, you need more. So, so I, 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 I don't, I don't see the benefit of it.
Counsel Murphy hasn't spoken yet and neither has Counsel Carney and then Counsel Specter.
I'll just a question, Carolyn, you're, you're going to continue in your presentation and describe what a bike space is under this ordinance, how much space is required per bike, that's coming, right?
Right.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify too, it's understood then that if a developer came in, that the number that is set down on the chart is the maximum that the planning board would require. There might be some, there might be some let up if there was a, I mean, a reduction in spaces. If that was demonstrated or shown, but a developer would never expect that there would be over and a, once they've looked at this number, they would then have to provide more than what's on the table.
Exactly. And, and I think the, sort of to go back to what Counselor Adams was saying, I think what we've seen is more of the issue that applicants are concerned that they're not going to know what that number is going in and that we don't have a standard saying what type of system, how far apart, you know, what the style is, how much am I actually going to have to outlay for this? And that's actually more of a burden that we've seen than having an open-ended number and having the planning board pick something out of a hat based, you know, at the time, the moment of the public hearing.
So you want to continue with your presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just suggesting Counsel Adams again. You know, we already, we do these kind of standards in other ways too. Automobiles, parking being one, I mean, we could say, well, if it's silly for bikes, why do we do it for parking? I think, again, it gives us some framework, gives developers a framework. I also would question the onerous quality of the, that supposing a developer was coming in as going to do a restaurant of ten thousand square feet, which is pretty good-sized space. And to build that, what we're talking about would be ten bike spaces. I'm not sure that that would be particularly onerous when you look at the scale of the project, just in terms of common sense that you're talking about putting out front a bike rack. So I think even though, you know, it may look like five spaces per classroom is really large, but when you're talking about a new building, this is a very small piece of an overall development.
Counsel O'Donnell, you'll follow.
I, I would hate to just keep adding opinions to this. I know you want to continue with your, your presentation, so I'll just be, be very brief. But I would just follow up on what Counsel Specter said and say, I mean, this is, this is zoning. So, I mean, in theory, we could turn over all of zoning to an unelected planning board and they would just make all decisions in a discretionary fashion. But I don't think we ought to do that. I think we ought to set standards for what we want to see in a variety of measures. And this is something we aspire to in the city. So I like the idea that we're setting, we're setting, of course, for a future demand, if not, if not current demand. It's appropriate that the elected branch of city government make those decisions to supplement what the planning board does.
So the ordinance also goes into detail about where bike storage should be. Not at the back of the lot, far away from the building front, but within fifty feet of a primary entrance. And if the primary entrance is within fifty feet of the street, it should be in, you know, between the street and, and the building. It can also be within the right-of-way if approved by the city. And that could mean either in the street or the right-of-way that includes the sidewalk, depending on, you know, how much space there is to accommodate that. The ordinance discusses dimensions and spacing, so the bike racks need to be two and a half feet apart and three feet essentially on center in length to give enough room to maneuver around and store bicycles next to each other and get in and out and to lock and unlock. And then it talks about alignment, so that, you know, they're perpend- they're parallel to each other or arranged in a line and then spacing, how much spacing between each if they're in alignment. And then there's standards for separation from the curb. You want two feet from the curb for safety and eight feet from hydrants. And then there's a preferred style that was identified and that's been in, we have a parking, a bicycle parking guide that's been, that was adopted by the Parking and Transportation Committee several years ago. And this has been sort of the working guide for applicants, but it's never been in zoning. There was another standard that was in the original ordinance, but has since, there's a recommendation to drop the, the wave. So these are the two preferred bike racks, but again, you know, other options are available. But if, if applicants just want a quick solution, they can pick one of these. So that's it for bicycle storage in terms of the standards there. And the next piece of the ordinance is in the site plan section, which is about sidewalk construction. And this brings, again, is sort of the same details that we require applicants, but it's not in the zoning. We, we have standards in Department of Public Works, we have standards in the subdivision regulations, but we want to bring those same standards over for zoning and particularly in commercial areas. So there's, there are dimensional requirements for the width of sidewalks in residential districts versus commercial districts, ramp grades and so forth. Grids that are in the sidewalk, we want to make sure they're not too wide so that, and if they're more than a quarter of an inch that, or if they're a quarter of an inch, that they're perpendicular to the curb instead of parallel so that it can minimize tripping hazards. And then in terms of sidewalk continuity and safety for people, pedestrians and other users of the sidewalk, we've been encouraging and requiring driveway access points to ramp up and across sidewalks instead of cutting driveways and cutting the sidewalk down. And so these standards are written in to this ordinance as well.
Relevant to this because actually it pertains directly to me, that, that I live on a street that has no grass strip, has no separation. In fact, my, my driveway does cut and ramp down through the sidewalk, which is unfortunate and treacherous for people who are actually trying to traverse it, particularly when it's icy. We don't offer an alternative because there's not much, without the, the grass strip to create that ramp, there's, there's not much of an alternative. I mean, and we have quite a few streets that function like that.
Right. So again, this is for a new, this would typically be for new construction or if you're doing, you're building, if you're asking for a new curb cut. Or if Department of Public Works goes in and rebuilds a street and it includes sidewalks, then this would be the standard to use.
Any other questions relevant to sidewalks? Is that it? Counsel Murphy.
Not, I don't really have any questions about the sidewalk part, but the bicycle part, you know, I think I share Counselor's, Counselor Adams' feeling about this. I mean, essentially, what this ordinance does is say, the traditional bike rack that is currently in front of the high school is obsolete, melt it down, get rid of it, that doesn't solve the problem anymore. I mean, if you have a school with twenty classrooms, that's two hundred spaces. That's going to take two thousand square feet of area if you have them every two and a half feet with eight feet here and there. I mean, it chews up a ton of space. I mean, bicycle storage as we think of it now, you know, is obsolete. When you, when you put these standards for space and style in, it chews up an awful lot of space and is going to be very expensive to com- accommodate. I mean, you know, a climate change analogy, I don't want to be considered a bicycle denier, but I think that this is kind of over the top a little bit. When you think about the fact that what we're used to is bicycle racks are gone and the space it would take to do this would be, I think, I think is a little much. And some of the places you want to put these things in the setback, right now, they'd be under four feet of snow. You wouldn't be able to get to them anyway. I mean, the nice red beach bar bicycle, you wouldn't even see, it'd be totally buried, you know. So I think for a lot of the year, some of these things are going to be totally inaccessible anyways, even though we require them to build them. I, I just think it's onerous, at least the bicycle part, portion of it is. And, you know, in five per classroom, it, it just, it seems a little over the top to me. I'm comfortable with the sidewalk standards because I think, you know, there's sound engineering and that's what's been going along, around for a long time, you know, but the bicycle thing, I think, is, is a tad over the top. And, and I mean, a, a bad idea doesn't become a good idea just because it doesn't apply to anything but new buildings. Eventually, it's going to apply to everything. You know, it's a standard and once you codify something, it is the code, isn't it? And it's awfully hard to get people off of it.
Counsel Specter.
Well, just so we don't lump all of it into being onerous, you chose the example of the classroom, which had five. But if we got that chart up again and again, so classrooms, usually schools are built with quite a bit of space around them. And I would hope people, as they're developing schools now, would consider the encouragement of bicycles. So that's just for the classroom, but let me just finish. But if you look at, again, if you go to a bar, a nightclub, restaurant, the Y, it's one per a thousand square feet. And again, I use the example of a restaurant, you know, that may be three, four thousand square feet, five thousand square feet even. That, you're talking about five bike spaces. So the one I would say that you pulled there, which was the classroom one or the, even the trade one of two per classroom are the only ones that I would consider, you know, onerous. But again, these would be for, I don't think, for new buildings. And so if you're talking about a new school, again, I would hope that would be a school that had, that would have the space to do that.
But the standard also requires a certain distance from the front door. You can't stick them wherever you happen to have room, they have to be there, which I think is also an issue.
Counsel Shara.
When you say change of use, let's say a restaurant went in where Faces is now, would they, they would then be required to meet this? Except it doesn't apply in the central business district. And that, and the reason for that is because we, as a community, have potential for creating sort of more bike space in public, bike parking in public spaces and we need to do a better job frankly of providing bike storage for the public, for the general public. Because it's sort of a communal space, there's an exception for central business. And if I could just go back to the old, the old-fashioned kind of bike rack, the reason why that's not a preferred rack anymore is because it doesn't hold as many bicycles, because you can't really put that many bicycles, even though you have a long rack and you, and it seems compact, you can't actually physically fit bicycles in every one of those little slots that are created. And, and it also requires you to lift your bicycle up and over to get the locks around. So there's, there are several reasons why those bike racks are, have fallen out of favor.
So this future new school that we're going to build that would suddenly trigger this, of course, doesn't compel us at this point to take the bike racks that we currently have and scrap them and melt them down, though those are still allowed because they're pre-existing systems. We're not building a new school in any time in the near future. And probably by the time we do secure funding for a new school, people won't be riding bikes, they'll be hovering or in some other fashion. But the fact is that the, the, I think the onerous description that you're describing, at least the onerous circumstances relative to new school development is really the most hypothetical aspect of this whole thing. With the exception of Smith College, of course, is possibly the one entity that was, is likely to develop new systems and buildings. And we, we have kind of a limited say over what they do within their campus anyway, based on the Dover Amendment. But I don't know to what extent we have the authority to mandate that they, they meet these conditions in terms of bicycle storage.
Well, parking is clearly, parking for automobiles is clearly allowable to, to regulate. And I would argue bicycle parking, it falls under that same kind of category. So you can reasonably regulate schools. And I think it's, one of the issues about Smith is we're, we're currently, they're under a, a traffic demand management program now where they're encouraging their faculty, staff and students to be coming to school without cars. So I don't, and they do, I think they have been working on creating better facilities for students and bicycles. So I don't, I think with every new building they build, we would be looking at that number.
Counsel O'Donnell.
I just would like to observe from what happened in the Transportation Parking Commission. You have a lot of people who are interested in bicycles as a mode of transportation. So I'm not surprised that many members push for increasing the number of bike racks. I think that makes sense. What I haven't heard is on the other side, I haven't heard anyone push back and say, this is too many. So I guess when we talk about how onerous this is, I'm not, I'm not seeing the pushback, except conceptually in this debate in the council. I haven't heard it from businesses, I haven't heard it from, certainly not any school or, you know, anything like that. So I would just make that observation. When we, when we think about what's onerous, we really have to ask the actual developers or people or builders who might find it onerous, and I haven't heard that. What I have heard is from individuals who use bicycles as a mode of transportation now and in the future, this is, this is a good idea.
Counsel Murphy and then Counsel Adams.
Well, I mean, I mean, I would just be a lot more comfortable with, on a project-by-project basis, since we're primarily doing construction, that the planning board asks developer to estimate what they think the demand for bicycle storage is given the project, present that to the planning board and let them make a determination if they think it's sufficient or not. I mean, clearly, if, clearly if it's new construction and it's senior housing, they're going to be able to make a case for the fact that perhaps fewer of the people are going to be riding bicycles than if it's family housing for people with, with young children. Absolutely, I think it's, it's practical. Here, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a bicycle denier, so I'll be quiet.
Counsel Adams.
I'm a bicyclist and a bicycle enthusiast, but if you ask a committee that's fraught with bicycle enthusiasts, if they like the ordinance, of course, they're going to say yes. But also, I don't think there's been any other sort of outreach done otherwise. So I mean, I mean, it's, no, I don't think we could tell from, from, from transportation and parking and this council meeting what any developer would think or even other bicycle enthusiasts. enthusiasts. So, you know, I mean, I think all we have is the minutes of the Transportation and Parking Committee, Commission, and this council. And if we want to do more outreach, we should. Otherwise, I think there's very little to be deduced from just these two committees.
Council O'Donnell?
But just on that point, I mean, that was exactly what I, what I said. It shouldn't surprise us that the Transportation and Park Commission asked for more. It shouldn't surprise us also, when we had the zoning revisions that we just had last year, that the Energy and Sustainability Commission pushed for more stringent standards for our zoning. But on that issue also, you know, perfectly public, a public issue, had many public meetings, many public meetings. And this is not quite on the same level, but certainly went before the planning board, ordinance committee, transportation parking, and the city council. And I haven't heard people push back against these requirements any more than I heard them push back against the energy and sustainability requirements. So that's just an observation. You know, I don't think we disagree on that point, but just something that I, I'm weighing when I think about this.
Uh, Council Carney has not spoken yet.
This is an example of why it's good that we have two readings on issues. We have the Gisettey RRC that Mr. Crowley is taking down notes on this, probably most controversial item on the agenda tonight. So I would have
Well, it's early yet.
Given the press and the two weeks that we have, if there is significant pushback or concern among folks in the development community, then we'll hear about it by the next meeting. And I'm comfortable voting for something tonight, with the understanding that if there's, there's a lot of other public comment or opinions on the matter, we'll hear about them in the next two weeks or at the next council meeting or something.
Uh, Council Murphy, you were next, and then Council Adams, if you want.
Well, you know, and I think we can always make the case, well, we haven't heard any pushback, you know, but the general public really doesn't spend a lot of time thinking about bicycles in February when they've shoveled snow for three of the last five days. I mean, yes, the advocates for bicycle transportation are going to be aware of it because they're interested in it, but the general public as a whole is just hoping it stops snowing. You know, to what extent do they know? And again, I'm, I'm in favor of bicycle storage, but it seems a tad arbitrary. And I'd still be more comfortable with the planning board leaving it that on a project by project basis, that developer will make a case for what they feel the necessary storage is for whatever it is they're building or whatever it is they're changing, and the planning board can on a case by case basis decide whether it works for them or not, rather than setting, I feel is kind of an arbitrary statute that then all of a sudden becomes, becomes gospel. I don't deny that bicycle storage is a good thing. I just think this is a little bit arbitrary for setting a standard when it could be reviewed project by project as it had been, and, and still come up with a successful result.
Council LaBarge has not spoken at this point yet.
I think Carolyn had stated that the process itself would be a heck of a lot better here with the standard being put in place. So that way, when developers come in, they know exactly what has to be done when they come to planning. So she distinctly stated that it would be easier for contractors or developers coming into planning, correct?
Right.
Because that standard is in place. Instead of not knowing and coming in and asking all kinds of questions in front of the planning board, it's there for them, correct?
Right. I, I think we already have a standard that bicyclists have to be accommodated. I think by going, I think by setting a standard whereby the applicant then has to prove or suggest that they don't need any bicycle parking is going against what we already have, is sort of taking a step backwards from where we are in the ordinance now, where we're saying, we need to accommodate all kinds of modes of transportation. And it's not just with bike lanes, but once you get to your destination, and if you work at a senior housing facility, you might only, you might want to get there by bicycle, or you might only be able to get there by bicycle. It's not necessarily the people who live in those buildings or facilities, but it's all the employees who might need to access that. We've had, this, the planning board has had this conversation with a number of applicants from office buildings to hotels, and their first inclination is to focus on building, the building and accommodate cars, because that's what, that's been the typical pattern. And so they're not necessarily thinking about the other facilities for the people who might be actually using the buildings once they turn the keys over to the end user. And for example, we also have a standard where shower facilities are required over a certain sized building for people who opt to come in other ways besides driving. And that sometimes comes as a surprise to applicants, because they're not really thinking about the end user. They're thinking about building a building to, and accommodating with a standard. And then I just want to go back and just say that for the process, the planning board held an advertised public hearing, and as a separate advertised public hearing, ordinance committee had their hearing. So there were two separate hearings that were advertised for two weeks each on different days. And it wasn't just parking and transportation. The planning board actually had quite a bit of detailed discussion about this chart and, and suggested changes. In fact, the planning board members, there was debate about how many spaces were appropriate, particularly for the schools, and that's where they came up with the recommendation to drop and pull out the business and trades. But they acknowledged, and we have a planning board member who actually works at Smith, acknowledged that schools never seem to have enough bicycle parking for the demand. So I think it wasn't just bicycle advocates from Parking and Transportation Committee that, that looked at this and evaluated it.
Council Specter, you?
Yeah, Carolyn said a lot of the things I was going to say. One is that we already have a standard, and I was going to say we'd be going backwards. And again, if we're going to do this, part of, kind of being forward thinking, we do this for cars. I mean, if you're going to say that about bikes, you could equally say that for cars. Why do we set such clear standards? We could say, let's leave it to the planning board. And I think you raised that earlier. Do we want the planning board to be the place? That's an interesting argument. We could. I would prefer that we have some, this seems a little more like a vision that we have, that, and that's more holistic. I'd rather we did that, but there may be an argument for the planning board to do it. But I would certainly support this, and I agree. I think once it's in the paper that the council has voted on something, we'll see if we have especially some folks who are in the development community coming forward and saying, God, this is onerous.
Uh, Council Klein has not spoken yet.
I also want to say, just using this language, this is going to be onerous for developers when promoting bicycle use is about promoting health, it's about reduction of pollution, it's about reduction of fossil fuel use, it's about all of these incredibly positive things that we want for our community. And so we have this opportunity to, you know, in a small way, promote bicycle use, which I think is just about creating a livable community, a healthy community. And, you know, I just think it's out of scale to talk about the onerousness of this for developers when it's actually promoting this incredibly healthy and positive culture for our community. So I really want to support this and encourage my fellow counselors to support this.
Council O'Donnell and Council Adams?
Just to add a new perspective to this, first of all, I think the debate on this has been really good, and I think it's good that we are not just rubber stamping one number, but having a serious debate about it. So I'm thankful for that. But I hope the logic that we're applying in this case does not hold true for the other zoning ordinance that we're going to look at tonight, which is about stormwater requirements for new projects. I don't want to skip ahead, but it's, it requires a comprehensive analysis of stormwater. Could that be burdensome to a developer? Sure. But it's the right thing to do, and it's better than no standard. We can be against 10 spaces per classroom, we can be against five spaces per classroom, one space per classroom, but we can't be against any standard whatsoever, in, in my opinion.
Council Adams?
Bicycling is very important for various reasons, including health reasons. I'm a bicyclist, and there should be a standard, but it should be based on actual need. As acknowledged, this is not based on actual need. It's, 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 to an extent, made up, to quote what Ms. Mish said. And if it were based on actual need, I, I would support it, but it's not. It's arbitrary, and because of that, I don't support it. Thank you.
Council Murphy?
And, you know, developer sort of has an evil connotation to it, has been used. Property owner, let's say property owner, not developer, not someone doing for profit, but a property owner that wishes to do something on their property. I think they may find it onerous. Not somebody building a shopping mall, but simply somebody, a family-owned business, trying to do something. Rich Cooper trying to do something. Not a developer, a grocer. Not a developer, you know, somebody that runs a small retail establishment that's doing a change, I think would find this a complex thing to deal with. May I ask that we separate this and be able to vote on sidewalks separately from bicycles?
We can, we can separate those, yes. And I'm going to take, I'm going to take the chair's prerogative at this point to speak at this point. And then, I think it becomes problematic when you conflate something like Cooper's and a smaller enterprise that would be obliged to provide one parking space for bicycle, one point, in fact, actually they already provide multiple spaces for bicycles, and that's, that's, I don't think that's necessarily a clear discussion. The other issue that concerns me is a developer, and this is not ascribing evil intent on them, but their purpose is to maximize their space for profit. It is not to promote the use of bicycles. This is where the community basically projects in, in planning, in zoning. This is the way we project our hopes and aspirations. And I think, as Council Klein said, it's an aspirant. It's not so much, it's not necessarily predicated on, on a census, an inventory of need. It's based on trying to, as well as to promote and create a culture of using bicycles. And particularly when we're speaking the term owners, we keep bringing up the issue about the requirement of schools. Now, as I said, this only applies to one school if we really parse it down. If, if, well, with any major retrofit or that goes to any of our new schools, of course, as well, but that's actually, it's already been our described ethos to provide as much, to promote biking as much as possible. And I don't think that's up to us, because then, in that case, we're the developer. And if we think that we, as a community, that that's too onerous, then that's a different issue. But as far as Smith, the, the biggest conflict, and I think Council Specter will speak to this, that occurs at Smith is relative to car usage, not bicycle usage. And if, if we have some influence on Smith and their development as far as providing more opportunities and options for bicycles, it seems to make sense. I, I understand the reluctance based on the perceived arbitrariness of it, but essentially, I think, built into these numbers, at least that has been vetted through the various committees, was the description of, as I said, Council Klein said, the aspiration and the promotion of the system, to try and encourage more bike usage and reduce car usage. And that's actually Smith, that's actually part of Smith's philosophy, at least as they've presented it to us, that they have, they have the desire to do that as well. And this, this would conform to it. We do have any number of things that we actually prescribe that could be argued as being arbitrary for development. When we have this debate on King Street and how development would occur there, we know that most developers would much prefer their parking up front, would prefer to have a simple box, would prefer not to provide green screens, prefer not to provide open space. That would be their preference. It would, and some have argued that it's too onerous to provide, to subsidize parking systems that might, that their systems may impact. Honestly, any project that fails on the strength of having too many bicycle spaces is a very fragile proj, uh, project, I would imagine. They would probably fail, they would probably run away from stormwater review. They would probably run away from setback regulations. They would probably run away from parking requirements and inventory and/or building requirements. Parking, I have a feeling, would be the lowest tempered point that would create a crisis. That said, I mean, I understand the objections. I acknowledge and, and, and actually think they're reasonable objections, but at the same time, I don't think they're, for me, they're not objections that actually hold enough water to make me consider otherwise on this point. And Council Murphy?
Can I request equal time?
I think I haven't quite come up to your par, but yeah, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. I mean, we're making the assumption that when people create buildings, that they do it in a vacuum. You know, if someone creates a building, and they have a target audience, they want to have, go to that building, and the people that they want to drive, draw to that building, they feel are going to come on bicycles, then it's going to be their intent to accommodate those people. That's why I make a case for the fact that let the developer make a case to the planning board as to how many spaces they think they may need based on the use they intend for the building, the people they think they're going to draw to the building, and if they feel those people are going to come on bicycles, of course, they're going to want to accommodate them. We make the assumption, you know, this assumption of evilness in people building things, that they want to do it as cheaply as possible, and that they don't respect the fact that they want to draw people there, that they're not going to contemplate how the people are going to get there, and that they won't accommodate their parking, their car, their parking, their bicycle, their parking, their drone, their pogo stick, their camel, whatever they come on. I mean, the process of creating a building that will, that will make this go into play in a major way are making a major investment, and they're not going to cut off trying to serve any population that they may want to get there. They, I'm getting that climate denier look again from over here. But anyways, that's my position, that people, that people should be able to make a case when they put their development plan up, how much they think they need based on the use of their building and who they think's going to come there. To me, that's reasonable, rather than setting an arbitrary standard.
You've, and since you're speaking to me, I'll address it. You've, you've made my point, actually. We, we actually, while we do want development, we want, actually, we want some influence of development and how that is affected. And that's why we have zoning, and that's why we have a planning board. It's for that precise reason, and so that we can reconcile their ambitions and our needs. And, and I, and to that end, I think that this is the happy, weird, confusing medium that we, we settle on. I, allowing developers to have their head and basically have them come and present and tell us what they want, and we go, well, okay, we don't really have rules relative to that. We would like you to promote more bike usage, even though you think that most of your customers are going to come in Humvees, not pogo sticks, that, that we actually want to discourage Humvee users and want to encourage more pogo sticks. And insofar, that's our job. That's our job. I mean, that's why we have these standards. It's just why we create these conditions. And there is a tipping point, and this is the, and I think to Council O'Donnell's point, this is a great debate to have, although we're probably killing people with boredom. But it's, it is, this has value because what it describes is, I, I really glad for the divided discussion on it, because it really does, this is us struggling with trying to find that fine balance point that makes sense, where it isn't, where it doesn't discourage development, yet at the same time promotes our aspirations. That's what it is. And, and as I said, honestly, I really think the tipping point for most developers is not going to be a bike rack. I'd really be surprised if it is that developer really had a really low threshold of pain. So, so that, but I understand that cumulatively, all these things can look more burdensome, and that I do understand and appreciate. And I think, I think this is the struggle we're having right now. I think this is what inspires Council Adams' concerns and your concerns as well. And, and right now, to be honest, I don't think we have any, I think we squeezed the juice out of this. So I think that, that it might be appropriate. Your call was for the separation of the vote, and I think that's appropriate as well. So if we, if the council's fine, I'd like to call the question, if we're agreed on that. Council Adams?
No, if you could just clarify the split?
The split is, is, first up, we'll, we will vote on the ordinance pertaining to the bicycle facilities. And then after that, the second part would be
The sidewalks.
The sidewalk facilities are also, as known as pedestrian facilities on this side. Council O'Donnell?
I have an amendment to offer.
To which one?
To the bicycle. And that's
Essentially, what's printed here in the table does not match what we see. And the use in bicycle parking requirement table on the second page, yeah, which is that. And the specific, specific thing that has to be changed is in the, the fourth row, K-12 school, college, and so on, we need to remove the words business, trade, or industrial school
And put it in.
Because it, it apply, it already is written two rows down.
Okay.
And then for fun, we might as well capitalize the word business.
Okay, so you're calling for the deletion on column four on the usage, on the use table, to remove business, trade, or industrial schools?
Correct.
It's correct on the, on the PowerPoint.
On the PowerPoint, but on our-
But it may not be on the-
Our document.
Yes.
So assume we're going off the printed version.
That's on the script, Nurse, that's the one that's on the screen.
Well, that's what-
No, that's-
That's just, that's what Carolyn just gave to her.
Oh, okay, I see.
Propose we synchronize.
Second.
Well, no, what you have here is correct, what, where it says here, actually, you have the deletion here as well.
Uh-huh.
So on her document, hers is correct.
She's fine, okay.
The one that we have-
The one that's submitted?
Okay.
The same, yeah.
Is corrected and amended. So that deletion, there is that strikeout.
If necessary.
Is that? Is this all right?
Well, that's the one that Carolyn sent me, that's the very last one I received.
But the one that you have there actually reads correctly, that's different.
Classroom, laboratory, other teaching areas. So if it's like, laboratory that's doing blood draws, it seems so arbitrary.
This is the one Carolyn came to us after rules, it came out of rules, so.
The one that went through ordinance had the separated line item for business, trade, or industrial schools, its own category, with a breakdown of two for classroom versus five for the other schools. So that came out of planning board and ordinance committee.
Oh.
The one that I uploaded here, Carolyn?
For ours.
Just the one that you sent me after the rules meeting, so.
And I printed that out here and I have it, you know, it shows up in two lines, one of them's a deletion, one of them's an addition. So whatever it is, the, I mean, the one that I printed that I sent you has it, so I don't know.
She has, she has that document here with the strikeout.
We got the right one.
The addition, but we just don't have it on our, on our agenda, so.
So we're all set on that?
I don't want to say that we're all set, because this is the one that I-
I have a suggestion then, Mr. Chairman, we could easily just vote on that right now to make sure that that amendment also passes, and then we can clear that.
So the amendment is to change what you already have reflected on, on that document, even though, so.
We just vote on it. No, she doesn't, she's saying she doesn't.
Right, what I'm saying is, this, this one actually is correct. If we make an amendment that would correspond with that, then this would be correct as well. So I'm just saying that you can use this for reference, not the final. Okay, all right. All right, so the amendment is to reflect the strikeout of those items, and then as they're presented here on the bottom on ours.
I have another.
Counselor Klein?
There's also in that same section, laboratory is named, which seems a wee bit arbitrary. I think the idea was that it was a laboratory for teaching purposes, but I think it can be interpreted to be a number of other things.
Research laboratories?
And all kinds of things.
Research laboratories.
And so I'm just wondering if it's really necessary to include that word, I'm wondering what the thinking behind that term being in there was.
Well, it's meant for teaching labs within a school setting, so we want to, we want to, so there's, so it's very clear that it's not just sort of your standard lecture classroom, but a classroom that's also a lab.
But then you're going to have like hospitals and medical facilities and things like that, that include laboratories being somehow included.
I think that's under, well, you can, if you feel like you need to clarify that by saying classroom labs, that's fine. The idea, I think if we go back to the retail section, or the, there's hospital, other medical uses is in the other category.
Does it have a different requirement, though? That's the-
But Counselor, it says other teaching, it, the implication is-
It's a classroom, teaching area, laboratory, teaching area, and other teaching areas.
I think it can be equivocal, it's not, I mean, it's, it's a small point.
We already have, we already had a reference to medical, two lines up, and similarly, it says other medical uses. If we were going to talk about laboratory as a medical use, we would have included it there. I don't know, I mean, I, I think it seems clear. What would you suggest to clarify?
I, I mean, I can't imagine that laboratories are going to be separate from the school facilities anyway, so it just seems like a, it's not a needed term in that.
So you would say striking it?
Just strike it, because of potential confusion, unless it feels extremely important to your office.
And Carolyn, can you speak at the microphone, please?
I believe the reason it's there is to make sure that it's clear that those are considered classrooms as well. So I think that, you know, I suppose that if it says any other teaching areas and you kept that, then that probably covers it. I think this was just trying to be very specific. So I, I'm fine if you want to strike laboratory, now that I'm looking at this sort of in total, because I would consider that a cla- a teaching area.
First of all, is that your amendment, Counselor?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
We have two amendments.
There's two amendments.
Deal with this amendment first.
Yep, hang on a second.
Can I make a suggestion? I would consider it a friendly modification of this amendment, if we just, it may be redundant, but can do it anyway, stick the word classroom, again, in front of laboratory to make it clear it's a certain kind of laboratory.
Classroom, comma, classroom laboratory, comma.
Yeah.
Not, not to belabor this any further, but, I mean, what if it was a, a laboratory in a school that's used for research, but is not ever used as a classroom or as a, it's a lab, where someone goes in to do lab work, but never, there's never teaching that happens in it?
To the amendment, Counselor Murphy?
Yet to the amendment, it is clearly our desire to plant bicycle spaces all over the place. So at this point, to quote a famous national politician, at this point, does it really matter?
I just remember when E.T. escaped the laboratory on a bicycle.
Oh, God, let's not get into flying bicycles, now.
I would call the question, yeah. The, uh, yeah, let me, let me, let me, hang on a second, please, let me recite the amendments that are proposed right now, where there is a strike, we're striking from this, as I understand it, we're striking from this, the business, trade, or industrial school, that's being struck, classroom laboratory is remaining, we remove the comma after classroom.
Yes.
No?
No, because we need classroom itself.
Just add another classroom.
You just add, classroom twice, classroom, comma, classroom laboratory, comma, and other teaching areas.
Fine, that's, that's, so.
Modified.
It now reads K through 12, school, comma, college, comma, classroom, comma, labri-, classroom laboratory, comma, and other teaching areas.
I just ask if I might, if that, that clears up the confusion for Counselor Klein?
Or compounds it.
I just don't think it's necessary, personally, but.
That's, so then therefore.
Then it's no longer confusing.
To those amendments.
Okay.
All those in favor of the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So now we're back to the separated order on bicycles. Is there-
Yeah, it's hard to imagine, right?
So to that first section, I will ask for the secretary to call the roll, please. And I know, and you have a part, you have to separate this out.
So we're doing bicycles?
Bicycles, yeah.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shira?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
If that passes in first reading, it will be subject to second reading at our next meeting. So now we come to the pedestrian safety section, sidewalks, otherwise. Any further discussion on that items? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shira?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Okay, that passes and will all, in first reading unanimously, and will be available for vote at the next meeting. Next up, we have the ordinance to amend code section 312-102, Schedule I, New South Street, this comes with positive recommendation from Transportation and Parking, and also positive recommendation from the Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments, and Ordinances, this is, it's first reading, and speaking of reading, would you like me to read the order?
I would weigh reading.
Um, it's a, it's a short one, so, I mean, I mean, in the interest of public understanding, so that, this is an ordinance of the City of North, and this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, this is an ordinance of the City of Northampton, providing that the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton be amended by revising section 312-102 of said code, and is providing for repealing prohibited parking on New South Street, and be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton, City Council assembled as follows, the table contained in section 312-102, Schedule I, prohibited at all times, is amended by deleting the following, New South Street, westerly, from point 253 feet southerly from Main Street to the point 275 feet southerly from Main Street. First of all, accept a motion?
So moved.
And then Counselor Murphy?
Could we have the Chair of Traffic and Transportation put that in simple English for us, as to what we're doing?
Sure, where the crosswalk was moved, the Academy of Music, this is a replacement of a parking space.
Counselor LeBarge?
So, Counselor O'Donnell? So what we're looking at by doing this, possibly, what, we're gaining one or two more?
Looks like one.
One?
One.
Is the year here correct? Should it be 15?
I think it might have.
Was it originated in 14 and it stays 14?
I think so.
Yeah?
Yeah, I introduced the last year.
Yeah.
We're a little, we're a little late, yeah.
So that's the introductory point, it goes into act upon, upon.
Yeah.
Twelve-inch sausage.
Getting older by the-
It's an antique.
Getting older by the-
So it's, it's actually point 253 or point 275, it is 22 feet, which is the standard for, okay.
Size of a parklet.
Parklet, what parklet is this?
Bicycle parking space.
We've got a discussion. So this repeals prohibited parking now, and what is, then what, what does that mean?
And creates a parking space.
And creates.
Creates a parking space, it didn't, this, the crosswalk.
The change of the crosswalk. Counselor Murphy?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shira?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
That passes in first reading. Now we come up to something that's particularly relevant and has been cited a couple of times tonight already.
Would it be possible to ask the council for two readings on this? Only because we've, this crosswalk has been eliminated now for about six months, and one of the reasons we would like to have a car parked there would be to discourage people who still want to step onto the curb in the old phantom crosswalk. So, I mean, it's the, it's the parking situation that's been there for many, many months, and, so anyway, I just would ask you to consider that.
Move to suspend rules?
Second. Okay, the motions have made, made to suspend rule 14 for second reading to occur tonight, and it's been seconded, any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
I move second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shira?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Murphy?
Murphy! That passes in second reading and is not law. Next up, as I said, this is my precursor to, this is for referral, but it should be noted, this has come up a lot, we did some discussion of this in public comments, so I think it's appropriate to actually read it before I actually, we send it off for referral. This is upon the recommendation of, I'm sorry? That's what we're working on right now, that was my preamble.
Yeah, we're on for first reading.
It's not for referral?
It's not for first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's first reading, my bad. Right, 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 then it's very appropriate that. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, an ordinance of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, providing that the Code of Ordinances, City of Northampton, Massachusetts, be amended by revising section number 40-5 of said code, providing for list of enforcing officers and penalties for noncriminal disposition, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton, that the list of following enforcement officers and penalties for noncriminal disposition, you add as follows under chapter, and chapter 285, section 17, the officers for enforcement are the Department of Public Works, director or his or her designee, chief of police or his or her designee, or parking enforcement officers. And the penalty schedule is first violation of $50, second violation, same event, $100, subsequent same event violations would be $250, I'll accept a motion and put that on the floor.
So moved.
Is there a second for purposes of discussion, then Counselor O'Donnell?
I, I move, we take this ordinance together with the other companion ordinance, I think that would make sense.
Is, is everyone okay with that? Which I will, I mean, it does make sense, we just defined enforcement officers, but we didn't define enforcement officers for what? And, okay. This is, this is also upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz, an ordinance of the City of Northampton. This is for snow and ice on sidewalks, removal by owner or occupant required, removal by the city. And it's called for a deletion of the entire chapter 285, section 17, and replace it with the following, removal of snow and ice from sidewalks, A, the owner responsible for a building, structure, or lot of land bordering on any street, lane, court, square, or public place within the city where there is a sidewalk, including any curb, ramp cut, shall, after snow has ceased to fall thereupon, and whenever snow shall have collected or deposited upon any sidewalk within 24 hours, remove the same or cause the same to be removed from such sidewalk, and also remove or cause to be removed from such sidewalk or cover, or cause to be covered with sand or some other suitable substance within 24 hours after it has been formed or appeared, any ice with which the same may be encumbered, in such a way as to render such sidewalk safe and convenient for travel to the full width. For property located in the central business district or in areas of Florence-zoned general business as delineated on the Northampton zoning map, the above requirements must be met within 24 hours or by 8:00 a.m. on the next business day, whichever is sooner. If a person is found to be violating the provisions of this section, it shall be the duty of the chief of police or his or her designee, the director of public works, or his or her designee, or parking enforcement officers, to assess a fine to any such person in accordance with the fine schedule set forth in chapter 40 entitled Non-Criminal Enforcement. Each 24-hour period of violation of subscription A or B exists, shall be considered to constitute a separate offense. B, no person shall place, deposit, or move ice or snow onto the paved surface of a street or onto a gravel shoulder area if any. C, upon neglect of or violation of the duties imposed by these provisions of subsections A and B of chapter 285, section 17, such duties may be performed by the director of public works or his or her designee at the expense of the person or persons or entities liable to perform those duties. Assessment of costs under this subsection shall not preclude any party from being fined under chapter 40, section 5. So I'll accept the motion for both.
So moved.
Second, okay. End discussion, Counselor Adams?
It's important to note that the duty is on the owner, even though that may play out in practice differently, and it also may be that duty may, by, you know, by lease obligations, fall onto the tenant, the tenant themselves.
obligations, fall onto the tenant, the tenant themselves. I think one of the most important things about this ordinance is it now adds for, and it now allows for enforcement by different entities, parking enforcement officers and public works. I believe both of those were new. I believe the past versions, it was, it was only the police department. And I know that's extremely important to the business community, because the things people, you know, everyone's wondering about how, how it gets enforced. And that's all for now.
The, the other actual important feature of this is it's taking something that's formerly a criminal citation, which is what it is currently, and converting it to a noncriminal citation, which also inspired part of the reluctance on the part of enforcement, because it's something you would have to go to appeal in court of law. And this actually allows and gives the flexibility for quicker responsiveness and more, an inclination from the empowered officers to actually cite, or at least to warn, and so thereby enhances and improves it and also lies, allows for a easier line of appeal. Counsel Murphy?
Did you read the fines? Because they're in there somewhere, and I don't recall hearing them.
Yes, I read. First violation, fifty dollars. Second violation, same event, one hundred dollars. Subsequent violation, same event, two hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, so that would mean, if you came into compliance, and then another storm came along, you'd start over again. Just so people understand that.
That's what I understand.
So it snows Monday, I don't do it till Wednesday. I do it when it snows the next Wednesday, I start over again.
That's how we shovel snow.
Yeah, and then, okay. And then just a question for the mayor. We now have three enforcing entities. How are they going to keep track of, you know, did a parking enforcement officer write the first one? Does the police officer that writes the second one, how do they know about the first one?
We're going to work on that internally. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work on making sure we coordinate that internally. I mean, I think the police will be the first line, but we'll work on integrating those systems to make it happen. So I know that that's been a concern, and it's even been a concern and discussed a little bit internally, but I'd rather have the option for more agencies being able to enforce it than less, and we can work out the logistics of that. I, I do want to add, though, that as the sponsor of this amendment, that there has been an amendment to my original ordinance, so just, I wanted to be clear about that. The, I mean, and I actually have discussed it with councilors at ordinance, I support the changes that were made to the first, to two eighty-five seventeen, that's fine. The changes to the fee schedule, I guess I'm a little more, less clear about, because I do think it changes the nature of it to have it be by snow event. Because that is a change that was made in ordinance committee. So I guess I'd want to, I guess I just would raise that, I'd want to understand what that, why that's in there, so.
Counsel Labarche, Counsel Shara, Counsel O'Donnell, then Counsel Murphy.
Mayor, I got a call from Mr. Nidel on Ryan Road today, reading about the ordinance change. And he does do his sidewalks very faithfully, but we have had a serious drainage problem on Ryan Road, which I know you know about, because we've had the Board of Public Works on site with me, and I'm in the concerns of how they do do the full width of their sidewalk, and Nidel's and so forth. Because of the drainage problems and the water, and it becomes icy, I had to tell him at least put sand on it, even though after he has already shoveled it and so forth, because he was afraid about all of a sudden somebody knocking on his door and fining him. So how do you solve that problem when there are problems on sidewalks with drainage, and people are plowing their sidewalks?
I think we, I think we would have to, you know, it would be, you'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and in this case, where you've got this other mitigating circumstance, but they're still trying to clear it and sand it, I think that would be, I think the, the officer would have to take that into consideration.
Okay, also too, with Mr. Estes, who called me, because Bill and I and Bobby, we had done the first original ordinance on this, and it's coming along great, is the last big storm that we had, Mr. Estes was out there using his snow blower, doing his sidewalk, which I did talk to Ned about this, he had great concerns, Mr. Estes did. The plow was coming out of Hickory Drive, and there is a curb cut within that area, and it was already done, and the plow went, and all the stone went back on the sidewalk, plus the curb cut. And people are just not going to constantly keep going overwork and overwork, so we've got to work something out here. Of once the plows come in and the curb cuts are already done by the resident within that twenty-four hours, they're doing it over again.
Yeah, that gets, yeah, that gets a little trickier, because it's very difficult to verify that part of it. I mean, I know that the.
But it's caused the problem.
Yeah, but, but there's even, I mean, there's even case law about the fact that they, you still have to, the liability still exists for the homeowner, and you still have to clear it, even if a plow throws it back onto your sidewalk. So I realize that's frustrating for people, I mean, I, my driveway gets plowed back in all the time.
I'm talking about the sidewalk with the curb cuts.
Yeah, but I think, I think those are situations like that where we obviously want to have the highway superintendent take a look at it and see what, what can be done to modify it, but on its face, I have to be clear, the ordinance requires the sidewalk to be kept clear by the property owner.
We understand that, there was concerns with the resident on it.
Yeah.
Who also was part of doing the original sidewalk ordinance.
I know, he's a very.
And also too, with the plow, which I talked with Ned about, and Richard Poselati, was coming out of another street and pushing the snow up on the city tree belt onto the sidewalk. So how do you solve these problems here?
Well, I, I should note that what we are actually voting on.
I understand that, but I'm just letting the mayor know, Counselor, okay, that people have called me about complaints about this.
Thank you, Counselor, I understand and acknowledge, and should note that for the public and then for anyone else who has a question about this, what we are doing is expanding enforcement officers who are, who ask, when issuing a citation, have discretionary power. They can take into consideration the particular challenges that are presented, the unique challenges, and determine whether it's appropriate to cite, or at least warn or caution somebody so that, because as we all agree, the objective is to create the clearest, safest passage for pedestrians and people who are, who are in wheelchairs or on crutches, people in strollers, the original intent of the rule that we developed. So to that end, we're just expanding enforcement and reducing and modifying it so it's no longer criminal citation, so, and I think the issues that you bring up are certainly ones that we bring up in the event that they do get cited. They haven't been cited yet. I understand their concerns, but if they do get cited, then that's an issue to deal with. And Counsel Carney?
Yes, thank you. I'm just very concerned, I mean, I support this entirely, I'm just, the reason I'm really concerned is that presently, probably only one percent of residents clear the sidewalk to the entire, to the full length.
Mm-hmm.
To the full width. I mean, typically, most sidewalks are cleared a shovel's width, which is obviously inadequate for anybody in a wheelchair or anything else. I know in, in my neighborhood, there are only two residents, and one of is the council president, whose sidewalk is cleared to its, its full width. So I'm concerned that when this is, goes into effect at our second reading, there are enormous, there are snowbanks across the city that are now frozen, that are massive snowbanks, and every resident will be required, will be, to move those snowbanks from where they exist on the sidewalk, lift them up and put them into their yard, which is where they belong.
They're currently required, it should be.
I understand, I understand that, but what I'm, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that ninety-eight percent of the residents of the City of Northampton will be fined fifty dollars effective, effective at our next council meeting. I mean, April second, I mean, it could be that they'll melt, it could be, it could be that they'll melt and these will all be gone, but if not, on April, is that our next meeting? Oh, we have one sooner, we have one, okay. So on March nineteenth, it's not very likely that those snowbanks will be melted down, and essentially, ninety-eight percent of the residents of the City of Northampton will be, or should be, if we pass this, and we're sticking to it and we're actually enforcing it, receive a fifty-dollar fine. So I'm, I'm just concerned about the logistics and how this is going to, how this is going to play out on the nineteenth.
By the letter, by the letter of the law, they could receive a fine. It's a discretionary thing. There are a lot of things that people can receive, all kinds of fines for and are not. The fact that this has been a particular, what did somebody say, this is a winter of one in two hundred years, I think is one thing that gets taken into account, that there is nowhere to even put the snow, as somebody said earlier, was talking, can get taken into account. It also becomes much easier to challenge, like challenging a parking ticket at times. You can go in and challenge it, but you can say, look, this is what happened, and I've seen, I was there just the other day, and I saw somebody challenging a parking ticket, and in fact, you know, they're taking that into account. So you can challenge it much easier. It's, we already had it as a, what you're saying then is, we had a criminal, we would have arrested ninety percent of the citizens, and that would have been.
If I can clarify, what I was saying is that I'm concerned if we're not going to be kind of consistent about this matter across the board. I'm concerned if some people get a ticket and some people don't get a ticket, when the fact is that there are very, very, very few residents who comply with the law presently. And so when we have a situation where that not only the vast majority, I mean, nearly, I would say ninety-eight percent, really, of the, I, I think that most people don't realize that the law is to remove all the snow from the sidewalk. I think people are under the impression that if they shovel a width's worth and they clear a space to walk in the sidewalk, that they've complied with the law. In most, I would say, again, ninety-eight percent of the people's real, and ignorance is not, is, is no excuse. I understand all that. I just, and I know that you're saying it's a discretionary matter, but, I mean, is it? Isn't it? I mean, who, who gets the ticket and who doesn't? I mean, it should be, we should maybe give a, a moratorium for this year, maybe, or something, I mean, rather than just.
As to your question, who gets the ticket, it is now, under this new rule, not the previous rule, it is the property, is the owner of record who is ultimately liable in this circumstance, so if it's, if it's.
No, 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 you're not, here, what I'm saying is, Counsel.
No, I, I.
It's a matter of discretion, so some people will get a ticket, some people won't.
I got you, Counselor, I got you.
Two things. One, I do have a question, I want to address you specifically in a second, but Counsel, you know the old ordinance. Was the same language in the old ordinance in terms of width of the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay. So that in the past, what we were saying, we better be consistent, we better arrest everybody, but the.
It wasn't an arrestable offense, by the way, I should just be clear, so we don't.
But to appeal, it would have been much more difficult.
Right.
So the other, what I think you're addressing here is actually, how will this be implemented in terms of policy? Because we have a lot of, there are other things like this where they do, there is some discretion, and I think that's more supervisory thing, so there, what's that?
Like shooting dogs who are off leash.
Well, yeah, so, okay.
Stay on point.
So I think, I think that we can get into a lengthy discussion and.
Oh, on that ordinance.
But I think this is, this becomes, how are the, the agencies now in charge of this going to look at this? What is the directive going to be from the mayor in terms of this? And so that there is consistency of policy. I think that's what you're asking for, and everyone is treated fairly. And I think that's up to the, you know, up to the, how this policy is in putting effect.
Counsel Shara?
Kind of close to my question that I had a while ago, which is, if someone wants to make a complaint, have we figured out where they, about that?
Police department.
About an unshovelled sidewalk? Right. Probably the police would be the best place.
Also, there's a web, dispatch would be the. There's, on, on the website, there's now an opportunity for.
There's an app you can use on the website, which goes to dispatch, yeah.
Okay, so it goes to dispatch, okay.
Yeah, and so that dispatch would, would deal with it at that point. I'm not telling people to call nine-one-one about a shovelled sidewalk, I'm just saying that the communication center are the one that route those complaints that people call. Like, when you call the business line of the police department, you're going to talk to a, you know, a dispatcher, who's then going to route that to an officer, so.
And so would they be routing them to the officers or to parking enforcement?
Probably an officer, but I mean, the officers and the PEOs are all on the same radio frequency, and they talk all the time, and PEOs request police officers and vice versa, so they can, they communicate with each other, so, and even the DPW's on a, on a similar radio channel. So, yeah, I think, I mean, again, just to, from my perspective, part of what spurred this look for me was when the, when the bid decision came down, and I had a big meeting with downtown stakeholders, and I got lots of questions from people about the snow, who's going to deal with it, what's the ordinance, you know? And the ordinance we had before was a little bit unclear, and it actually was unclear whether it was the property owner, or whether it was a tenant, or who, you know, who was actually responsible. And then we had this whole other issue of, you know, the having, the cumbersomeness of having to file a fifty-dollar criminal complaint. And so that's what spurred looking at this, and, and trying to make, make it clearer and make it, make more sense, and then trying to spread out the, you know, obviously for downtown, you know, having the PEOs who are out patrolling downtown, looking for, you know, you know, handicap parking violations, you know, parking in, in other area violations, this would be an easier thing for them to be able to observe. So, so that, that was the, that was the impetus for this, it was not, you know, it was not, and also, we do get complaints, and so we wanted to be, have a more effective way to respond. I also think that by having it be, sort of having progressive discipline or progressive fines, that for some of our habitual offenders, that it, it would, you know, we, we have had some offenders who just, you know, you know, take, we mail them, we mail them the fine, we mail them the ticket, and they just kind of like, keep going along, going along. And so I think by ratcheting it, it up, that that will, you know, make it more, create more of an incentive for them to comply.
So are you concerned that changing the, how those fines are, the structure of it is not going to solve that problem that you're talking about?
I am a little concerned about that part of it, because the original, my original ordinance just said fifty dollars for the first offense, hundred dollars, and then two fifty. Now it's, now it makes the second and third offense per event.
Right.
So theoretically, you know, you could have a habitual offender who just always waits until the second forty-eight hours, and just gets, takes their fifty-dollar fine and just, you know, keeps going along, and they're always just going to get a fifty-dollar fine. So it does kind of defeat the purpose if you're trying to go after the habitual offenders. So that, that, that does change a little bit. So I, I wasn't at the ordinance committee, so I don't know the rationale for that.
Counsel O'Donnell, then Counsel Murphy.
That was a point I wanted to kind of return to, unless we want to discuss how it's going to be enforced a little more, but I, I guess I would also remark that, I mean, it's, this is a tool, I think, that various agencies can use to try and get the sidewalks clear, but if there's no ordinance we can pass, that will obviously solve the entire problem, and there'll be imperfections with anything, but this is a big improvement. But on the point that the mayor brought up, we did change this in, in ordinance, but it was subject of, the subject of some discussion, and I think we sort of decided that we couldn't decide, and the council ought to debate it. So that's what I'd like to do, because I think the word same event is, is actually kind of unclear, I'm not sure what it means. Does it mean the same snowstorm? And if so, I don't know who's going to get free tickets in the, in the space of one snowstorm. My opinion is it should be for the same season, and then we define season somehow, so that maybe it does reset next year, but, I mean, if, you know, one month you don't shovel, then the next month you don't shovel, then the next month you don't shovel, that would seem to be an appropriate use of the escalating fine, in my opinion. So that's my comment.
I think the reason that we talked about it as ordinance is that I'm really good with my sidewalk. And I take my kid to Disney during their February vacation, and I get back to it days in a row, because I'm not there, I can make arrangements. So now I'm at, you know, DEFCON three, I'm getting hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty-dollar tickets. Well, for the rest of the season, I'm good about it, but should I miss one period? I, I'm still at that level. It seemed a little unfair. I mean, if you, after you get your fifty-dollar ticket, you do your sidewalk and you're right with the world, if two months goes by and it happens again, I'm thinking that really shouldn't be your second offense, that should be your first offense of that snow event, that it would reset by snow event, so people wouldn't stay at two hundred and fifty dollars all the time, you know, if they're later than twenty-four hours. So that was the logic behind that.
We used to have the phenomenon of downtown parking, when we had a five-dollar ticket. Someone would park downtown in the morning and say, five bucks to park all day. What's the harm? That's great, that's cheap, I can park all day in an ideal space in front of my place. When we changed the law to say that if they continue to, they can be ticketed on every hour, and it will be cumulative, now maybe some extenuating circumstances, maybe they parked their car and went to Disneyland, but the fact is, is that, that they would be held accountable for that time. And I think the purpose of this, the intent of this, and I think that, that the situation you described opens it up for the opportunity to appeal. I, I would prefer that we actually have the standard that if there is someone who is a scofflaw, who says, all right, fine, I got my fine, I'll just wait until the next storm, the next storm doesn't come till, till another month later and their sidewalk is impassable during. is impassable during that whole period. There's no, there's no further incentive beyond the outstanding ticket that they have. They got their one ticket, and they're, they basically bought their right to ride out till the next storm. So I, it doesn't make sense to me. I think that when we do, when we build in these escalating fines, to the purpose that we did this with feeding the bears, bring up another, but we, the thing was, is we built in an escalating fine, built in to accommodate people who were not, whose behavior was not altered by the initial fine. And that with increasing severity, supposedly, you inspire people to be more, more responsive.
So if they don't shovel it within twenty-four hours, you give them a ticket. If twenty-four hours later, they haven't shoveled it, you give them the more expensive ticket. If twenty-four hours later, they haven't shoved, you give them another ticket. But then they shovel it. And two weeks later, it snows again. It doesn't start over at fifty, it stays at two-fifty for the rest of the season?
It's, well, that's, that's subject to debate.
I guess the question would be, if you got a ticket, why, why wouldn't you address the problem? I mean, why, what, I guess-
No, I mean, we're worried about those scofflaws that don't seem to care. At two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day, they should start caring.
Yeah.
So would a person get a ticket who have shoveled, but they haven't shoveled the full width of the sidewalk, theoretically?
That would be a violation. That, if they have not shoveled the full width of the sidewalk down to the pavement, according to the standards described, yes, that would be, they would be-
But that's not something that's been enforced at all.
No. This is part of, part of what's inspired this, is the, the fact that much has been enforced.
But my question is, is that the intent, that we'd actually enforce that?
The hope is to enforce it, and cultivate a sense of-
So people will, people who shovel, who routinely shovel their sidewalk, but they don't get rid of that snowbank between the street and where they've shoveled, they haven't removed that, that snowbank, and some people-
They're not obliged to remove the snowbank, they're obliged to keep the sidewalk clear.
Right. But the snowbank is on that, is on the sidewalk.
Yes, it is.
Virtually everywhere on every street in, in North Hampton, every sidewalk has a big snowbank in front of the person's house between the street and where they've shoveled.
Well, we also noted that a lot of the streets actually have those, the grass belt, which actually accommodates-
Well, yeah, and those, those people have those.
But, yes, yes. In fact, that is the law now.
Right. But it's not enforced.
Exactly. We keep going back and forth on the same point.
So I'm just, I'm just really shocked if we're actually looking to enforce that, that's something, because that's, that's thousands of tickets.
Well, the, the-
Really, it's thousands of, it's probably two, three thousand tickets on-
If one continues to violate and enforcement is, despite enforcement, then yeah, you're probably right. Actually, Counsel LeBarge.
I do know for a fact, Counselor Carney, that I do have people on my ward who constantly, okay, when somebody had not done their sidewalk on Ryan Road area specifically, they would go ahead and call the police. And the police would go directly to that person and tell them about the ordinance and to do it full width. Now, you're correct, because right now, we do have problems. Especially on Florence Road, coming down from Florence Heights and so forth, whoever did it, and I don't even know whose responsibility it is, if it's Florence Heights or not, but it's not full width. It's tiny. And how people can even walk on it, it's so deplorable. Over by the ice pond, the same thing, too. That's a mess over there. So I don't know who's taking care of all these sidewalks.
It should be noted that usually what the enforcement officers do is give a warning first, and explain what the law is, and explain what the potential for the violations. The opportunity, the option here is, we do with all these things, is not to generate money or to create a crisis, but it's to actually, to encourage the behavior that we all, I haven't heard anyone speak in opposition of trying to improve and enhance passage to the sidewalks. It's not to, to go out and generate a new revenue stream by fining every person in the city for not accommodating, but to be more conscientious when they shovel. That they're not just shoveling, you see a lot of tendency shovelers who are shoveling just literally to their car, a single width of a shovel, which does nothing for the people who need to pass down the sidewalk. And we have people walking in the streets. It is, we are condemning people with disabilities, we're condemning people with strollers to be stuck in their houses, or to walk on the street in unsafe situations. This is the tool that we have, this is an enhanced tool. This isn't, it's enhanced, it's not, and it makes it easier to actually negotiate with the public and not give them something that's an onerous criminal citation, which currently, the police are very reluctant to give because, and the cry that we hear frequently is that there's not enough enforcement. And that the police are reluctant because who wants to go to court to go talk and debate an issue, whereas now you have a line of appeal with a discretionary officer?
We think there'll be less reluctance now, the enforcement-
I think there'd be more opportunity for people to become educated. And this is, as the mayor says, particularly concerning relative to Central Business District. There are some business owners who aren't necessarily as assiduous as they, as we would hope. And this is where we have our principal pedestrian traffic. And in the past, we became accustomed to the bid plowing and clearing those sidewalks. And everyone just, they woke up one morning, every morning, and, look at, the sidewalks are perfect. That's not happening anymore. And particularly this winter, it became very obvious. And we were approached, Counsel Adams, Counsel O'Donnell, myself, and the mayor were approached by a number of business owners who were very concerned about this. Because, and, so, the intent is not to just suddenly swoop down with a bunch of flying monkeys and punish people for not accommodating the sidewalk thing. I mean, the, the purpose is to promote a greater and increased awareness of how we, how we meet our obligations, making sure the abutting sidewalks, the curb cuts are clear, the sidewalks are clear. It's why mine, it's why mine's clear is because I was one of the authors of that. And I, if, I didn't want to be that jerk who wrote that rule and then didn't meet the conditions of that rule. But true, I do lift the entire snowbank up over into my yard.
And that's all, I fully support the whole thing, but it is, but I think that people don't understand that piece, that the entire width of the sidewalk needs to be clear. And the only way to do that is to lift that up and put it into your yard. And especially, it's, it's difficult for people because that's snow that's come off the street. So snow that's come on the street is now on their sidewalk, and they're supposed to take it and pick it up and put it in their yard. And I think people, that is the law, and I support it. But I think most people don't understand that.
Well, I think that comes with education, and hopefully, as, as the, if this should pass, that the empowered officers will make a point of warning people first, and explaining to them what their obligations are. And then, after that warning, then, then there are consequences. Counselor LeBarge, actually, Counsel LeBarge, you spoke last, Counsel Murphy, then Counsel LeBarge, then Counsel O'Donnell.
What, one of the other things that concerns me about it is that it, it really doesn't cut any accommodation for seniors or people with some disabilities that may not have the capacity to do that. I mean, I know myself, you know, I spent thousands of dollars on snow removal. I have a lot of property to do. But it can be really expensive for a senior or somebody on a fixed income that doesn't have the capacity to do it themselves. I mean, I don't feel bad at all for somebody that wants to play video games and not go shovel their sidewalk. But, you know, if, if you are a single senior living at home, and you don't have the physical capacity to do it, it can be very expensive to pay someone to do it. And that isn't really dealt with very often. And I know at one point in time, the senior center actually had volunteers that went out and helped those people. But I don't know if that's still in place or not.
It is.
It is.
Monday night at Public Safety, we had a police officer that said he felt so bad for a senior that he had to go ticket, that he shoveled their sidewalk for, so he didn't get the ticket. I mean, we really have to come up with a mechanism, I think, that works in that case, so that, you know, these vulnerable citizens, some of whom we want to shovel the sidewalk so they cannot walk in the road, are going to get in trouble because they physically can't do it, and they can't afford to do it.
Counsel LeBarge, Counsel Specter hasn't spoken on this point yet. Then you'll be next, and then Counsel O'Donnell.
Yeah, I'm not even sure. I'm going to just say this, and then maybe if other people pick up on it, I'd offer it as an amendment. Is it possible to write in on that table of the, of the fines and the offenses? Do we want to say that the first thing would be that by policy, we're saying you would get a warning the first time?
That's an amendment that you're making, then, but yeah.
Well, I kind of, we'll see if we get a, I get a second on that. So I will throw that in, then on the second, at least for discussion.
So for the purposes of discussion, we're now speaking to Counsel, Counsel Specter's amendment, which is to provide, to add to the fee schedule, the first violation would be a warning. And Counsel O'Donnell, that point?
Yeah, to, to the, to the amendment, I mean, and, and to the Council President's early, earlier point about changing the culture. I mean, it's less important to have a draconian fine than it is to get people used to the fact that you ought, ought to do this. So I don't necessarily feel the first violation does have to be fifty dollars. It could be a warning, it could be five dollars. And I might suggest we also consider, I don't want to make it too complicated, but do we have to go to two-fifty? We could have four levels, increasing fifty dollars each time, and end up at, at two-hundred. But, you know, I, I think there's always a discretionary option for a warning. But I could see the, the value of having at least a very low fine the first time.
Counsel Carney, to the amendment.
Yeah, I, just as the Counselor said, there's a discretionary factor to this. And obviously, because the discretion has been really more of the practice of not giving any fine. I think it's very, very, very rare that fines given for this. So I don't know that it's necessary to actually write in that the first violation should be a warning. I mean, I think it's understood that if anything, the present, current practice is warning. I, I don't, I don't, I can't imagine that anybody has been given a fine without first been given a warning. And so I think that-
Police actually have a, they make, they've made up a card that actually has the ordinance printed on it. It's like a paper, red.
So rather than, but my point is, rather than writing in, I would, I don't think we need this amendment. I don't think that we need to actually state that a warning should be the first action. I think that's understood in the same way that the, the whole thing is discretionary, on everybody's part. So I would say that rather than mandating that there be a warning given first, I think it's just understood.
Counsel Klein to the amendment.
It's not to the amendment.
Okay. Counsel Specter, was it to the amendment?
And I would even withdraw the amendment in a moment. I won't quite yet. Someone might buy this argument.
Just to hold the floor?
Yeah, hold the floor. When you start adding, some of our most conscientious folks who would be also giving tickets on this, or folks who give parking tickets, I'm just also thinking about the public when they read this, that it's like, oh my goodness, now we've got these great parking people who do a fantastic job. And just the other day, I was parked for like three minutes and came out, and they did their job. I had a meter ran out, and I got a ticket. I'm just thinking, you know, it just, in terms of the, what you were saying earlier, of people reading this and seeing it and going, oh my God, now I'm going to get ticketed. I was just saying it to kind of soften it that, okay, the first time you get a warning. And now I will withdraw my amendment.
All right. So we're not discussing the amendment anymore because it's been withdrawn. So we're back to the regular order, which put Counsel LeBarge up next for the, again.
I have concerns, too, about the elderly, and the difficulties that they do have because of their disabilities also. I do know for a fact that the senior center does have, and still has, the communication that, and it's even on the radio for the city, that we can call the senior center for people with disabilities or a senior. I also think we could also communicate whatever the changes are going to be on this new ordinance by placing something in the census. That would get out to everybody, on the language and any changes.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Where's Counsel Klein?
Counsel, oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Klein. Yes, I'm sorry.
So I have a question and a suggestion. My question is, have we looked at how other cities have done this? Is this based on other models?
Well, we looked at the ordinance, we, when we wanted to update the ordinance, we looked at a number of different cities of similar size, and sort of modeled our language after that.
And did, did you also have any kind of evidence of how it's worked for the particular city that you use the model of?
Not really. I mean, I think this is just a, this is a perennial issue. I mean, you talk about, you know, for every senior who can't shovel their sidewalk, we get a call from a senior who said, I can't walk to the grocery store, you know, and, or my walker can't go down the sidewalk. So I mean, it's just, it's the, you know, it's, this is a perennial seasonal issue. And, and a lot of this, and if we didn't, and it's not like we just said, oh, let's think of a new way to fine people. I mean, this is in response to people who call and say, you know, I walked down Bridge Road, and suddenly, the sidewalk that we built for the kids to get to school, it hasn't been shoveled by the owner of that property. And so now kids can't get to school. And so then we're trying to figure out who the owner is, and track them down, and fine them, and, you know, do all that kind of stuff. So that, I mean, I'm just saying that we're not, this isn't happening just because we're doing it to come up with creative ways to create, you know, fines. It really is trying to respond to a public demand.
Just to clarify, I wasn't critiquing at all. I was really just asking a question about whether or not there are models out there, and whether we-
Yeah, I think, I think what I, what we found is, we've tried the, you know, I think the police have generally given warnings, and mostly informational, like here's a, they printed up little bright yellow or, or red flyers that have the sidewalk ordinance. And they've gone to people who haven't shoveled, and given them this warning, and said, you know, we can cite you and, and this fifty-dollar, to try to get them to shovel. And I think what we've heard is that there are some habitual folks who just, you know, especially, especially, I think, the non-owner-occupied property owners in particular, who, you know, I don't know if it's built into the lease, but they just, they tend to just not do, they're the same people who don't trim their hedges, and they're tend to be, you know, again, the same that aren't attentive to their property. So, so I think the idea was, in looking at other communities, they had kind of a progressive fine system to try to create more, because, you know, somebody, you know, gets mailed these fifty-dollar summonses, basically, and can pretty much, I guess, ignore them, and, and, you know, and so, but if they start to ratchet up, and they start to get more and more expensive, then it might be an incentive for them to come into compliance. So.
So my, my comment is that I just think that this potentially could be a fraught system. I think Counselor Carney brought up some valid concerns, I think. I mean, there are just innumerable issues that could arise. But I also feel like, I don't suggest that we legislate like this all the time, but I feel like we should call the question, move forward, and see how it works for a season. And we may have to revisit this issue, but I think that we can just go around and around here with, you know, the potential ways in which this is fraught and going to be fraught. But we, we have to just move forward with it. So I really would suggest that we call the question.
Are you calling the question?
Well, I feel bad, because I know that Counselor O'Donnell's been waiting, but I just hope that we can move in that direction quickly.
So you're not calling it?
I'm not calling the question. I'm suggesting that maybe after Counselor O'Donnell, we call the question, if I can do that.
Well, I have a suggestion as well, and it's a very humble suggestion, is I also agree we should try and move forward. I think we should debate amendments on this, specific amendments, and then vote on it. I don't want to cut off debate on it, but I do think we should change, you know, let's, let's fix the words that make up the ordinance. And so I would like to propose an amendment. And that is to, on, in section forty-five, change the word "same event" to, to "season beginning October first." Because I don't think it should be per event. I think it should be per season. That's my first shot at defining what a season is. And I would accept modifications to that.
Accept a friendly amendment?
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess if you were, I mean, this is going to look weird to the public, but if you were to say fiscal year, that would be at least, that would encompass a full winter, and at least it would fit within our computer systems, somehow.
Yeah, that is fine. I would accept that as a friendly amendment. Yeah, the purpose being, the fine should reset only after a year, per snowstorm. That's my motion.
Fiscal year.
Is there a second to that?
Because a year could span two winters. So, same winter, same winter. So that's why fiscal year would be July first to June thirtieth.
Should I reset my motion?
Yeah.
My, my motion is to, to strike out "same event" in both instances and change it to fiscal year.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
There's a second to that. Discussion on the amendment. Counsel Murphy.
I think it's consistent with what we've been doing tonight, because shoveling your sidewalk is damn good aerobic exercise. So you could draw like an analogy to riding your bike. We're willing to say it's a good idea to ride your bike, it's an equally good idea to shovel your sidewalk.
People are riding bikes, we wouldn't have the winters that we-
Sock it to them.
Exactly.
Because you can't ride your bike in the winter, right? Because you can't ride your bike in the winter, right? So, you can shovel your sidewalk.
Counsel, I-
I have an amendment to change it.
Well, we're still on this amendment. Did you want to speak to this amendment?
No.
Any discussion on, any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amended, as stated, is the two-
I have to tell that before we-
Okay.
So, that means that if someone has been warned first about the snow that's on their sidewalk, and then, and then, okay, so, they only get one shot before it, before it then moves up, and that's over the winter. So, that example, then, that Counsel Murphy gave, that someone has gone for a week, I mean, and again, we're thinking, all of this is discretionary, so, I guess we would hope that there'd be some consideration given for the person who, whose, person who was supposed to come and shovel their walk while they were gone to Florida, and, you know, it fell off the radar, and they didn't do it. Something like the, you know, Senator Carr, you know, and he did get the fine, he did pay the fine, but I do get concerned that it would mount up in the course of a week.
I do, too.
I just, I'm just saying, well, I would just hope that, but again, it's understanding that this whole thing is discretionary, and-
It's also subject to appeal.
The past practice, and the past practice has been no fines. I mean, I think it's very rare that even a fifty dollar ticket has been written for anyone. I might be wrong, am I wrong? There are, there are very, very rare, in few cases-
There's been more in the case that we've had to actually-
Maybe a handful?
In a few cases, we've actually had to plow and send them, we have had to exercise-
You'll note, that's the last, that's actually the last item that-
There's probably no more than a, being able to count on two hands, when in fact, there are thousands and thousands of violations, so.
But, remember, it's also subject to appeal, and at least, one of the things that's built in, this is not a criminal citation, so they don't have to go to court. They can go and appeal to-
Right. These are things that, these are fines that were, I'll go ahead and support the stiffening, the more we stiffen the fine, it's just about the, it's really all about the enforcement. It's about whether or not we enforce that's going to make a difference. We can stiffen the fine as much as we can.
I know.
So, we're actually still talking about the amendment?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, you were about to, you were calling it, and I interrupted.
That's correct.
You were about to call roll call.
Counsel Murphy, to the amendment.
To the amendment. I mean, if they're reluctant to write fifty dollar tickets, how reluctant are they going to be to write two hundred and fifty dollar tickets? Because from three on, they're all fifty dollar tickets. You know, are they just going to go, you know, in a week's time, I'm going to hand you that much money? Are they going to do it?
I think, we can debate this to the point of ludicrousness, we can actually escalate it to add in for an item, but the point is, is it's, I think, compliance, the issue is to promote compliance. And whatever, we need to improve what we have now. This, by my reckoning, improves it substantially, and including the amendment. And I think it improves, enhances enforcement and in compliance, more importantly. And if, and they're subject to review. If there are people, and it's not going to be many, if there are people who just say, I don't care, two hundred and fifty dollars, I don't care, if they continue to violate, then we address that on a different level, I think, at some point. And the other thing is, I should mention, item C on this ordinance is, upon neglect or violation of the due to pose by the provisions of the subsections, essentially, the city can go and plow it and charge them for that.
Right. And if I, if I may, it sounds as though, the whole reason that we're having this, the whole reason that this came before us is, there were some violators in the downtown area, and in order to be able to deal with those, we needed to be able to broaden the enforcing authorities. It has nothing to do, really, with the thousands of violations that there are across the city in the residential areas. I would imagine, I mean, that's not the impetus, because that law was already on the book. That law was already there, we already had the ability to go and find-
Frustration has been expressed, it's not just exclusive to downtown, there's been frustration expressed throughout the neighborhoods-
Okay.
-for some of the reasons. So, Counsel Adams.
Liability would be another incentive, too.
Yeah. Oh, another good one.
Okay, so, I didn't mean to, I mean, I know you were in the middle of calling the roll on the amendment, and I'll support it, but again, the point I'm making is, it's not about how much we, it's all about the enforcement.
Yes.
It's all about the enforcement, and whether or not we even get that first fifty dollar ticket given.
Doesn't matter whether it's the first, second, third, or fourth, it's whether the first one's ever given.
To the amendment, any other comments? All those in favor of the amendment, the amendment reads now that the fiscal year is, instead, it deletes the language "per event" for citation, and now says "within fiscal year," within the same fiscal year, right?
Correct.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I'm opposed.
Any abstentions? Okay, so, one, no. And Counsel Adams has an amendment.
My amendment would be to change it to nine thirty. On February nineteenth, I was at the downtown business community, committee, excuse me, meeting, and there were many people from the business community, a significant amount of them, who felt that nine thirty would be a more fair time. Certainly not, that's not, you know, that's not the entire business community, as we heard from what Ms. Peron had to say about it. But, that's my amendment.
So, second to the amendment, for purposes of discussion?
I'll second.
Okay. All right. To the amendment, Counsel Scharr.
I, I support it as written. I actually think it's a safety issue. There are plenty of people that need to be downtown and walk before nine thirty. There are employees that have to get to the businesses that need to open, the cot shelter at seven AM is when people need to leave the cot shelter in the morning. There are a lot of people that need to get to the bus stops. I actually think it's, it's good for the businesses to have it, everything cleared before things open up, for themselves, their employees, and also for everyone else to get places.
Now, this supersedes that it's still snowing. You know, everything else is twenty-four hours after it stops snowing. If it's snowing like crazy at that time, do we expect these people to be out there clearing their sidewalks if it's still snowing? Because that's the way it's written.
Counsel Klein?
I think there are two good points on the floor here. I think that expecting a business owner to pay an employee to come in an hour and a half early to start shoveling is a lot to expect of a business owner. However, I do agree, I think there's a real safety issue here. I'm wondering if we can maybe somehow meet halfway, or make it eight o'clock instead of, or eight-thirty or something. I'm just, I'm trying to figure this one out, because I do think that it's a lot to ask business owners to bring in their employees early to do the snow clearing.
It should be noted that one of the requests was to modify it to ten o'clock, because that's when many businesses open. So, that was one of the requests, and I think Counsel Adams was trying to split the difference with this amendment. To, Counsel LaBarge, you add your hand up, do you still, you still, I'm going to do the amendment, to the amendment. So, the amendment is, is, I'm sorry, I flagged that, yes, it's the time, the deadline time for central business principally.
Right. My question is, the mayor, have you been hearing from the business people also on a later time?
This actually was an amendment that was a modification that was done by the ordinance committee, this wasn't part of my original ordinance? I actually support it, I think it makes sense, but I, but this wasn't part of my original ordinance. So, I have not, I've heard, I have heard the issue, like, that Bud Stockwell mentioned, about, you know, eight being too early. On the other hand, there are a number of businesses that open, that don't open at ten. I mean, there's a lot of service businesses, like the dry cleaners, and the coffee shops, and bagel shops, and even City Hall opens before ten. But we shovel our own sidewalks. But, but so that, there is, yeah, so that, it's a balancing act. And then, there's, there's workers who have to get to those establishments. So, I haven't, but I haven't heard a whole lot about it, I just think that the eight o'clock, I think it struck some people as too early, but it's probably the people that are used to open their doors at ten, not the ones that are opening their doors at six, or, you know, so.
Counsel Carney, then Counsel O'Donnell.
Okay, yes, I do agree with Counsel Scharr that the eight AM is more reasonable, given the level of business that people are, people are moving around by, and need to have clearer sidewalks. To answer Counsel Murphy's question about whether, while it's still snowing, it clearly says in the ordinance that after snow has ceased to fall, thereupon, or whenever snow shall have collected. So, I think it assumes that the snow shall have fallen and stopped, and it's actually, you have within twenty-four hours. So, according to this, you have within twenty-four hours, the next eight AM that happens to occur.
No, no.
They're actually just-
Within twenty-four hours, or by eight AM on the next business day, whichever is sooner.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's what-
So, eight AM would be sooner, in some cases, than twenty-four hours.
Oh, whichever is sooner, yes, okay. So, if the snow stopped at ten at night, the night before, in the morning, you need to, but if the snow stopped at nine AM, you have until-
The following.
The following, you have twenty-four hours on the following.
Right.
Okay.
And again, this is not, I mean, most businesses are out shoveling their walk-
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't think that eight AM is unreasonable.
This isn't like, something that's being honorously put on them. They're, no, they want customers and commerce to want to do that, so. I think I sent Counsel Adams a picture the other morning, of, at nine thirty, it was sort of a patchwork, and there were people out there shoveling, and getting the sidewalk cleared after that last little slush storm we had.
Counsel O'Donnell, to the amendment?
Counsel Carney explained what I wanted to explain.
Okay. Any more relative to this amendment, the nine thirty time? I mean, I would say that, to Counsel Murphy's point, or actually, to Counsel Klein's point, what about hiring somebody to come in early to do, as Counsel Murphy actually said, there's a cost associated with this.
Right.
Always. There's a cost associated, as Counsel Adams pointed out, with the liability. If you, you know, we have a number of downtown businesses who are concerned about people who present as impediments to their businesses, the snow is even greater impediment for potential customers. Now, since the one thing that distinguishes central businesses, it's actually a system, less so than the neighborhoods, this is a system at which, that functions on access, that needs the access. So, again, this is, you know, we're trying, we're struggling to deal with the phenomenon that occurs throughout the Northeast and other places, it's snow. We all have those, and every community has these same regulations and the same frustrations. And you hear people annually complain about the snow in the winter, and the shoveling, and all that stuff that goes with it, as if it never happened the previous year before. The fact is, is that we are struggling with the best way that we can accommodate it, and encourage and educate people, that, how much emphasis, and it's the same thing as promoting bicycles, as Counsel Murphy said, it's what we're aspiring to. It's, and so, with that, we're creating a definitive structure. The bid, when it functioned, even though it never existed, it turns out, but it magically made the snow go away every morning before business for most businesses downtown. That's no longer the case. And as a result, we had a number of businesses request a better way to deal with, with snow issues. So, and that's what this is. I think, actually, nine thirty, I think is fine, I think it's reasonable. I think even though, the fact that there are people who will be struggling, that one thing that you also recognize when you step out in the snow, that there is going to, it's not going to be perfect every time, everywhere you go, at every moment. We're trying to just make the best situation possible that accommodates all the, all the stresses and pressures that go with it. And, believe me, I'm sympathetic, I dread every snowfall where I do have to lift my entire snowbank up into my yard, although, it does save me much, Jim. So, to the amendment.
Just a quick question on the amendment, why nine thirty instead of nine? Seems like a nice, simple time.
Well, I mean, the reasons they stated were fairness, and I do think, and I pointed this out at the meeting, was that they're thinking from a retail perspective. And I did point out the point that was raised here, that, you know, cafes and other, you know, the other, other named businesses are, are open well before then. But their points were that, you know, if ticketing started at nine thirty, all those other businesses are welcome to start shoveling whenever they want. But they want it till nine thirty, for those other types of businesses that do open a little bit later, to have that time before they can get ticketed. And the others are welcome to do it earlier if they want. That was, that was, I think that was their thinking.
Or the ordinance is sort of for businesses that wouldn't normally do it, would have no incentive to do it. If you open at eight o'clock, you kind of have an incentive, I suppose, to your point, perhaps.
Counsel Bar.
Yes, I mean, even on Main Street, you have an eye doctor on Main Street, people go in, you can have an appointment for eight o'clock in the morning. So, I have concerns about that time, nine thirty, especially people with disabilities. What do we do here?
Well, we vote on the amendment, is what we do, and-
It can be revisited.
What's that?
It can be revisited.
And it can be revisited, this, this, as, as problems present themselves, and they will, we can make adjustments to accommodate those problems. But we have to start somewhere. So, I will start by asking all those in favor of the amendment, the amendment is to change the time for central business from eight to nine thirty.
Yes.
Right, correct?
Did you say all those in favor?
Yeah, no, I was just saying, first of all, I was defining the amendment, which apparently is right. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Opposed.
You want to do a roll call on it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, roll call, please.
Counsel O'Donnell?
No.
Counsel Scharr?
No.
Counsel Specter?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
No.
Counsel White?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
No.
Counsel LaBarge?
No.
Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
I believe the amendment failed. Okay, so we're back to the original question. Are there any other amendments? Okay, Counsel O'Donnell?
We might consider having the greatest fine amount be a hundred dollars, not two fifty. So, I propose we, we strike the second violation line, and make the subsequent violation to be a hundred dollars. The point is not large fines, the point is to get people in the habit of expecting to be fined. That's my final idea.
So, the amendment is to strike the two fifty line for the fee schedule, and just leave it at fifty to a hundred dollars, is there a second on the amendment?
And to clarify, it would, second violation would become subsequent violation.
Subsequent violation, thank you. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second. Second.
Oh, there's a second, there's a second. So, discussing the amendment. Counsel Klein?
Verification, so it would be a fifty dollar fine the first time, a hundred dollar the second time, and that would be it.
For all subsequent, yep.
For all subsequent, okay.
And to clarify, so that, by subsequent, that means every twenty-four hours, you could be fined a hundred dollars again?
Right.
As long as you have not shoveled.
Again, I don't, it's all about the enforcement, it's all about whether even the first fine is ever given. But I do think that the way that it's written with a maximum fine of two hundred and fifty dollars does give us the opportunity to fine two hundred and fifty. The discretion is always there, so even after the first hundred, even after the fifty, and then the hundred, if, if, if we're looking for discretion, and we don't want to give out two hundred and fifty, we just don't, which is what the present practice is right now, is we just don't. But I think having the two hundred and fifty dollars there just allows for those really egregious violators to fine them for two hundred and fifty dollars if we want. So, I would leave it as is with the two hundred and fifty, is my, is the option there, for that to be able to be given.
Any further discussion on the amendment? You want to do a roll call on this? Roll call?
No, we're doing it.
Counsel Scharr?
The amendment is to change the fine schedule, and to just be fifty and one hundred dollars.
Thank you. No. Fiscal year.
So, we're doing the roll call, and Counsel Scharr has already voted no.[1751.04]
Counselor Specter?
No.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Carney?
No.
Counselor Dwight?
Counselor Klein? No.
Counselor LaBarge?
No.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes. That amendment fails. Any other ones? Counselor Klein?
I'd like to split the difference on this, this question of the businesses, um, needing to shovel by 8:00 a.m. is really bothering me, and I'm really trying to create some split of difference here in the timing. Because if you, as a business, are expected to have someone there at 7:30 to shovel by 8:00, um.
Hang on.
Okay. I think that there's a big difference between getting an employee there two and a half hours before business opens, or something like an hour and a half before business opens to shovel. So, I would like to make an amendment that we're talking, that we have it by 9:00 a.m. as opposed to 9:30 or 8:00.
So, a second to the proposed amendment to change the time?
Second.
There is a second, okay. Uh, any debate on that?
I just, the original reason was for the safety of people who are downtown. And in the same way that it's a, it is, it's a burden on everyone to clear the snow from their sidewalk, whether it's in front of their residence or in front of their store. Um, it's a burden that we all carry, and whether you go down there yourself and shovel, or, you know, do what many people do, which is hire someone to come and shovel, everybody, many people do that for their own, those who can't shovel or can't plow their, their driveway, hire someone to come. And it's just one of those costs of, of living in the winter. Um, I, I agree with the original reasoning that 8:00 a.m. is a reasonable time because it's such a busy area downtown, even at 8:00 a.m. People coming out of the, the cot shelter, especially it's packed this time of year, and people who are otherwise walking to work, to cafes, to restaurants, to all those other appointments and businesses and City Hall, places that are open already at 8:30. So, um, again, I, I just think that 8:00 is a reasonable time.
Um, I'd like to note that we're coming up to the witching hour for when we can no longer deliberate, so.
Suspend 27. All right, suspend the rule.
You, you want to, there's a motion to suspend Rule 27, which requires us to adjourn at 11:00, and there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That, there's a no.
Hey.
In this one day, okay. Um, the, uh, now we're to, we're back to the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Uh, roll call again on this one, please.
What do we do? Counselor Specter?
This is to change the time to 9:00 o'clock, again, yes. But this is, instead of 9:30, it's not, it's 9:00. To change it to 9:00. 9:31 was defeated. This is the, to, uh, an amendment to change it to 9:00. Take it away.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
No.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
No.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
No.
Counselor Sharon?
No.
Oh. Five yes. That amendment passes. Uh, so the half hour, does anyone want to talk about school start at this point?
Code.
All right, now we're back to the original question. Any other discussion on the original question as amended? Roll call, please. We're voting on both, yes. Both, both the fee schedule and enforcement, and also the dictate of the rule, uh, eliminating criminal citation and defining the terms for the central business district and the city, and, and general business in Florence and the city at large.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sharon?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
That passes in first reading. It will come up, subject to another discussion at the next meeting, and perhaps we'll hear from the public in the interim. And hopefully, there will be no snowstorms in between then and next episode. Next up is a first reading for an ordinance regarding stormwater flood control utility fee. This comes with a positive recommendation from the board, from the public.
Mr. President, could I suggest we take, um, the one that Ms. Mish may have talked about at a board and move that up?
Sure, you want, uh, that's G, is that what you're talking?
Uh, correct, yeah. Yeah, 14.331.
14.331.
Wait, or G.
Item G, which is the ordinance pertaining to stormwater management as part of the site plan review, coming with a positive recommendation from the planning on January 8th, 2015. No recommendation from the Public Works Committee of the City Council on, uh, January 5th of 2015, and no recommendation from the Committee on Rules, Ordinances, Orders, I mean, Rules, Orders, Appointments. Uh, Carolyn Mish remains recognized, so Carolyn, if you want to come and speak to that?
So, I'll hold it now. Um, this ordinance is, um, again, sort of one of those ordinances to clarify what the Planning Board and Offices of Planning and Sustainability and Department of Public Works have already been asking of applicants when they come forward for site plan approval. And that is, um, for site plan applications, this is two sections. One is the procedures for submission, what you have to show, um, in your application, and the second one is what the approval criteria is for the Planning Board. Um, so this first section, 11.5, um, clarifies, or spells out that applicants, as it relates to stormwater, need to show what the water quality impacts would be, what their planned, um, best management practices would be during the construction phase, um, to manage runoff that might be coming off the site during construction and potentially after construction, if they're a big enough project to trigger a full stormwater analysis. Um, and the next section talks about major projects, which is anything that's over 5,000 square feet of new construction, or which by zoning automatically is deemed to be, um, a major project. So, um, there's a, and this is to address, um, requirements that we now encourage applicants to show how they're going to manage stormwater in a way that's not a piped mechanical system, but first look at what we call green infrastructure, which could be the use of rain gardens or swales or, um, previous pavement. So, um, the, the idea is to get it down in text, to say, this is what we expect you to look at first, instead of the default, or what has been the default up until this point, which is many times detention basins and catch basins and, and pipes that take the water away from the site. Um, and then in the, um, there are also a subset of projects that are bigger than, that are 5,000 square feet that would be triggered, um, and would have to look at these, um, these types of systems that don't already trigger a separate Department of Public Works, uh, stormwater permit. So, those, um, Public Works, um, jurisdictional permits are for disturbance of an acre or more of a site. So, there are some projects that sort of fall in between that are only Planning Board review, but we still require them to deal with their stormwater on site. It's just not a separate permit from DPW. Um, and so then the approval, um, process would be that, um, that, which we already require is, um, to, um, make sure that the maintenance of these systems, um, there's a, there's a set of procedures for maintenance, and it's spelled out and recorded prior to construction. So, and then there's some minor tweaks to, um, the, the type of, um, design storm that we want applicants to, um, to, um, design around.
Counselor LaBarge?
Carolyn, I, I, when I went over this, I kind of like compared the bicycle one and pedestrian with this. Looking at it as an example of it, this is the way I'm looking at it, making it clearer.
Yes.
Is that what this is all about?
Right.
And also, I think putting the standards, standards in place, especially like with EPA and so forth, I think is very detrimental for this.
Right. So, the one, I want to go back to, there wasn't a recommendation coming out of, um, Public Works. I think there was a little bit of confusion at, at, they were the first ones to review it. Um, Doug McDonald from DPW wasn't able to be at that meeting, so I think there was a little bit of confusion about, a concern that the EPA standards hadn't quite been written yet. We know we're expecting these new standards from EPA to come down, that will come down to, um, indicate what North Hampton will be required to, um, address in terms of stormwater. And so I think Public Works got a little confused that this might be putting a card before the course, whereas this is really just general language saying, here's what we, here's what we've, we've been expecting already, and, um, we want you to design for these, um, alternative systems, or what are becoming more standard systems, actually, in terms of green infrastructure. So, um, I don't think that, it's my understanding that the reason that there was no recommendation wasn't because they didn't think that it was a valid ordinance, but that they felt that perhaps, um, we should wait until EPA comes down with their final, um, standards, which we don't know when will happen.
Anyone from the Public Works Committee want to speak to that point? No?
I guess.
Fair assessment?
I think that's a fair assessment. I won't necessarily speak to a particular point, but I think I, I support this amendment because I think it's not just what the EPA is saying. The EPA is saying that hopefully, because it makes sense, and hope their standards make sense. So, if we put standards in place, I think these are sensible standards, sensible things to ask, and hopefully, the EPA will be equally as sensible.
If anything, they'll be more specific and maybe more, um, have more implications than what this states.
And.
Counselor.
Pam pointed out to me, which I appreciate, um, the Public Works Committee, back in January 5th, um, pertaining to this, stated that, uh, well, the position was that the EPA may mandate other changes to the ordinance, so the ordinance was sent forward with a no recommendation, three, nothing, with no, with, with no recommendation, but with a suggestion that the council vote to table it until the EPA makes further recommend, recommended changes to the ordinance. Thank you.
And so your clarification is that this is in anticipation of rules that you expect are coming anyway, and that it just clears up board?
This is what we already require now, and the stormwater ordinance says that we encourage, so the separate DPW jurisdictional stormwater ordinance already says all of the stuff. It requires recording of, um, stormwater management. So, there's, there's nothing really here that's different than what we already require. It's just not written down in the zoning.
And is it possible with further EPA mandates that we might be amending this or changing or modifying this in the future, depending on their ruling?
Um, it's possible that we would be adding more specificity. I don't think we'd be subtracting anything out of this.
Counselor. So, one of the things, having been with this for a number of years, it keeps seeming like, what I heard from the DPW, because I think I asked the question in the meeting of how soon, kept seeming like the EPA was going to almost immediately come forward. You'll notice that in the, um, the Beacon, there's an article about how the EPA once again extended the discussion. So, it's been going on. I think we first heard about this in the, when we had the joint committee three or four years ago, and it kept seeming like it would be six months. So, I think it's finally time for us to act. It could be another three years before the EPA comes out. So, that's, that's the change I have felt even in the last two months, that it just seems like the EPA just keeps extending the deadline.
Any further discussion on this point? Counselor.
Roll call, Pam.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Sherr?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
And we don't anticipate those, uh, that passes, I'm sorry, in first reading, and we don't anticipate that we, do we anticipate that we need Carolyn to stick around?
No.
Do you want to be liberated? She's got her thumb drive, she's ready to go home. Okay. Thank you for your time, Carolyn. Appreciate it. All right, so we're back up to, uh, you know, it may look optimistic that we're at G, but point in fact, we're at F. We're at F. This is the ordinance regarding stormwater flood control utility fee. Uh, this also comes with a positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee of the City Council on, uh, January 5th, 2015, and with a recommendation to amend recommendations proposed by Public Works, sorry?
I'm sorry, which number, letter are we at?
F.
Thank you.
This is 143333. Uh, this comes with a recommendation to amend recommendation proposed by Public Works Committee from the Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances on February 18th, 2015. This is the first reading. I'll accept the motion, put it on the floor.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, and let me scroll to it here. Um, oh, oh, whoa, I was back on snow. All right, I'm sorry. Um, uh, would you like me to read it, or would you prefer a description from the sponsor? Is that okay? Is anyone all right with that? All right.
Um, thank you. And I just, to start out with, like to be clear, since there's two documents in here, which one we're going off of? I'm going to be going off of the one that came from the ordinance committee.
Which is the.
You might have said that, but I just wanted to be.
Well, that's with the, yeah, with, it's the.
Assume that's what's on the floor.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. So, um, and I also like that, to thank Counselor Specter for starting the ball rolling on this with me as a sponsor and bring it to the Committee on, on Public Works. The point of this is to address an issue that I've heard quite a bit since we enacted the stormwater ordinance, um, and created the utility and began to send out bills, and that was from condo association owners. The practice that the Department of Public Works had adopted was simply to take the bill for an entire building or property and divide it up equally based on the number of condo owners or association owners within the building. Um, however, that's not always how condo associations divide up their shared costs. Um, they do it by a percentage of, of common ownership. This ordinance creates a new, um, tool, I guess, for condo associations to send in to the Department of Public Works that instrument that records the percentage of common ownership, um, and file at the Hampshire Registry of Deeds or Hampshire Land Court. And after they do that, the DPW will cause them to be billed according to that percentage. In other words, it's just more fair. Um, the whole problem with the stormwater ordinance that we wrestled with was how to make it as equitable as possible. My opinion is it still contains some, um, some inequities that we may want to address in the future, but this is not a major inequity. This is, um, one that I think we can address with this ordinance. It would just provide for more fair billing of condo associations.
Does the Chair of Ordinance want to speak to the recommendation?
Certainly, I mean, certainly. Um, this is, in fact, more equitable. If the condo association chooses to get more accurate with the distribution, they have the option of providing the information to do that to the Department of Public Works. And, you know, in some condominium complex, units are smaller, units are bigger, uh, some units have more amenities, and they tend to have a larger portion, uh, percentage of common ownership. Um, they split the rest of their fees that way. That would allow them to split the stormwater fee that way. So, if you had a four-bedroom unit and somebody else had a one-bedroom unit, the bigger unit would probably have a more, a larger share of common ownership. Uh, they would get a bigger bill. It's just more equitable, but it leaves the burden on the association to say, we want to do that, and therefore, we submit our documents.
Counselor Carney?
Just to say, I, I actually had similar conversations with condo associations, and we actually had a meeting with the Public Works Department, and even though we had a great help from Jim Laurel and Doug McDonald, something like this was exactly what, what we needed to be able to have them feel more comfortable, um, in, in order to have an equitable, um, mechanism for the residents at Laurel Park.
Public Works Committee, want to speak to this?
I have a friendly amendment. Um, after the word, under, under the proper association's definition, in the first line, after the word "ownership," I have an amendment to clarify slightly. Um, the amendment would be, after ownership, comma, whether residential, commercial, or multiple use, comma. And that also encompasses, in a different way, the amendment that the Public Works Committee made.
Got it.
And I, I do consider that to be clarifying and friendly. Thank you.
So, it's accepted as a friendly amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? In favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you get it? Okay. If you, if you could just send Pam the amended one.
Absolutely.
Uh, further discussion on the, on the order? No? What? Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Sharon?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That passes in first reading. Let's see, we've done, uh, G, we've done, now we're up to H. This is the, uh, the ordinance amending section 312-1032, no parking on Middle Street in Florence. Does that sound familiar? Is it, it's being deja vu all over again? This comes with a negative recommendation from the Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances on February 18th, 2015. A note, this ordinance was replaced by another ordinance that was already approved by the City Council. To remove this item from the active list, it will require a City Council vote. I'll accept a motion, put it on the floor first.
I move, we vote against it.
I need a second. Second, okay, and Counselor Murphy, you...
So, the little, the little street that wouldn't die here. It appears that, we, we dealt with Middle Street a couple of meetings ago. It would, would appear that this other ordinance is still in the system, and the best way to get rid of it is just to vote it down. And I'd encourage two readings tonight, so Middle Street doesn't reappear anytime soon.
So, just to further clarify, if you don't vote against it, I'll have to carry it over to the next session.
So, please vote against it.
Voting, voting no.
In two readings, and we'll get rid of it. This is the, this is the old version that we're not doing.
We're removing the tail, as it were. So, uh, any further discussion on this point? Is everyone fairly clear what we're doing here?
Need a roll call?
We're eliminating the penalty.
Or you do it?
We'll pick a poll on this, so. Go ahead.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
I mean, no.
No, it's good that we have a divided vote. We should have a divided vote, I think that'd be good.
I was agreeing with you.
Let me clarify the vote. If you vote yes, this remains on the books if it passes. If you vote no, it disappears and it's no longer redundant.
Thank you.
So, I'm not encouraging anyone to vote anyway, but I'm just saying that voting no is, in a sense, voting yes. So, if your inclination is to vote yes because you like to get rid of this, don't say yes, say no.
Counselor LeBarge? No. Counselor...
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor O'Donnell?
No.
Counselor Specter?
Nope.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Carney?
No.
No. This is defeated.
Suspend Rule 14.
Second.
If it loses, you don't have to do it twice.
Yeah, you don't have to vote twice on a law.
We don't, oh, that's right, you don't have to vote twice, it's, it's done.
It's dead the first time, unless somebody wants to do a minority reconsideration, there is no minority. There was a minority that changed, but there is no minority. You could do a majority reconsideration, but it's a little late to go through the entire charter to figure out what the hell we would do.
Equivalent of a Scrivener's error. That's what that was.
All right.
So, that's it.
Well, that's not, well, that's, that's done for that.
That's what I mean.
I moved to send all the referrals as a group.
The two referrals that are pending that Counselor Adams refers to are the ordinance pertaining to campaign spending limits.
There's two?
Right, we remove, so the tree, the, the, the tree definitions and, and has been withdrawn, pending an appointment of a tree committee, so that it can be referred to them, so that they can, they can work on that. And we're hoping that Counselor O'Donnell refrains from all puns that he's inclined to make. The, so Counselor Adams has moved the following two ordinances for referral. Ordinance pertaining to campaign spending limits, that's to be referred to committees, uh, the Committee on Rules, Orders, Appointments and Ordinances. Also, the ordinance pertaining to lost parking ticket fine, and that's also to be referred to ordinance. Is there, the motions are made and seconded? Who seconded?
I seconded.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Um, there are no updates, there's no information requests, there's no new business, I'll accept the motion.
Seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.